Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Hello. We are going to call to order the City Council Land and Shore Committee Thursday, March 1st, 2018, and we have a more than full house tonight. So, welcome everyone, we're really glad you're here. A couple of pieces of business first. I'm Chair Stacy Goodman, and to my right is Paul Winterstein, my fellow council member, and to my right is fellow council member Chris Ray, and what? My left, sorry. Over here, Chris Ray, and Chris is filling in for Tolem Arts tonight. We have a long agenda, and so I'm gonna talk about a couple of things first. Probably after the two first agenda items, the end of the development agreements, depending on how time goes, we will probably take a very short break.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Is that better? Okay. So, probably after the end of the first two agenda items, end of the Talis and Issaquah Highlands Development Agreements, we will probably take a short break, and I imagine that many of you might take that opportunity after that to leave, I'm just guessing. Also, we do allow, tend to allow, public comment after agenda bills where we are making recommendations, and that is the case tonight. However, I am going to be asking for groups who are here to designate one person to speak on behalf of your group. And the rest of you, if you agree with what the speaker is saying, please raise your hand. We like to hear from all of you, and so signaling support with the raise of your hand is an effective way of letting us know that you feel the same way. If there are individuals here not part of a group and you wish to speak, then that is fine. I would ask you to please respect the fact that we have a very long meeting, potentially very long meeting, and particularly with the development agreement topics, this has been before committee a few times and before us since early last fall, and so we've heard a lot already. And so particularly with those items, I would ask you that if you are going to have comments, please, please make them new comments. If somebody else has already said the same thing, and you've raised your hand, then I would ask that you maybe think about not speaking, just to respect the time. And then the last thing is, we're gonna limit comment to three minutes. So, plan your speeches accordingly. Did I miss anything? Any rules, anyone? Anything else you can think of? Okay. All right, let's get started. So, the first item is Agenda Bill 7524, and we have Lucy Sloman, and Land Development Manager. And I guess one question I have for, for my fellow committee members is, so maybe I'll ask Lucy first. Are you presenting Talis first, and you know, and then are we doing this agenda bill by, at a time, or are the topics the same? So, we're doing, the presentations cover both agenda bills?
So, that's an excellent point, in the same place I was gonna start. We have two agenda bills, but I have one very brief presentation, and then I really am just here to answer any questions that the committee has.
Okay. So, I guess one order of business, particularly for the folks who don't typically come to our meetings, and that is, we first have a presentation, and during that presentation, the committee members have an opportunity to ask all of their questions. After we're done, and it's strictly for questions, and after we're done with the questions, then we will call for public comment. After the public comment period is done, then we will deliberate and take votes, usually that's how, that's the way, how that works. Okay? All right. Carry on.
Thank you. So, I have five topics I'm going to cover tonight, some very briefly, vesting, the provisional proposal, an example, the minimum non-residential density, and structured parking. My question for the committee is, are there any other topics that you would like us to address up front? Hearing none. I'm sure you'll let me know if you think of something else. So, I'll start with vesting. You received a memo from Ogden Murphy Wallace. That is a legal position by our city attorney. I am not qualified to do any of that presentation, so I'm just identifying that that was a material that you've received in response to the committee's request last time, and that that is available for your reference, and hopefully to answer some of your questions. Provisional, it was a suggestion that we received, whether the regulation should be considered interim. We chose not to use interim because that is a term of art or an official term from the Growth Management Act related to moratoria, and we are not interested in creating another moratorium. So, these are provisional standards that would just be our own definition of it. We have met all the requirements for enacting new regulations through a year-long process. It will not have an automatic sunset as an interim regulation would. What we're looking to do is to conclude this process, and then based on engagement with each of the urban villages, potentially revisit vision or other aspects of the process that are specifically of interest, and we're looking to do that in 2019.
So, the, it's, the recommended is provisional. If the council chose to not adopt provisional regulations, could the, when you talk about the year-long enactment process, oh, sorry, the revisit vision, so that could be done with or without provisional regulations?
Absolutely. It's only a way of communicating to the community whether that is an intent.
So, the provisional piece makes a commitment from the city, because that's put into the ordinance. So, if, whether it's 2019, or whenever we decide we would go back out to the community to talk about the pieces we feel need additional conversation, that would be part of the ordinance. So, that's, that's the difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on these?
Just for clarification, it does say in the memo that by proceeding in this manner, the city would end the two development agreements. And, and that is, then that is the final, this would still then be that kind of that final piece that formally concludes the development agreements. It's...
Right. It would, we would be terminating the development agreements, and the replacement regulations would be the rules that are needed to take the place of the development agreement.
The development agreements would be over at the time that that is adopted.
Yes.
Lucy has to have a comment more than, than a question. I really like the idea of...
It's for questions only.
I just got told it's a question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the Jeopardy thing and frame it as a question. No, I'm not, because I think, oh, I'm gonna wait.
Could you boost all the volume, please?
I don't know that we can boost the volume. I think we can be closer. We'll try to do that. Is that better?
Do you need us to call upstairs?
I think he's heard. Oh, yeah, "call," it says, he said. Okay.
Okay. One thing that we thought might be useful more for the public than necessarily for the committee is just to take a very quick and example from each urban village of...
Down here, like by my legs.
How, what, for two parcels that are currently undeveloped, what are some of the, just using those as examples of the kinds of changes that would happen between what is currently in place with the development agreements versus what is proposed within the replacement regulations? So, for parcel nine, which is outlined in green on this side, the zoning is currently urban village, and that would be appended specifically for that and other multifamily parcels with the letters MF to indicate multifamily. The allowed uses at a sort of high level would be single-family or multifamily. The guidelines in the development agreement and the land use in, that is proposed in the replacement regulations, would both be medium density. However, that density, while it does provide a range, there is a specific entitlement in the development agreement and a zoning cap in the replacement regulations that limits that property to 90 dwelling units. So, if the, if the replacement regulations are put into place, even though medium density has a broader range of dwelling units that might be allowed, the only way to add those additional units would be by council action of essentially upzoning by increasing the number of dwelling units assigned to the property. And a maximum height, both now in the, and in the proposed regulations, are 60 feet. So, whoa.
Is that even more?
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah.
Thanks, Wes.
Okay. I'm not used to being so loud. So, at Issaquah Highlands, we looked at a property behind Dixon Marshalls that's called Block 20. It is currently zoned urban village, but it is proposed to be urban village with the suffix of com reit, which means commercial retail. The uses that would be allowed on this particular piece of property are commercial, both now and under the proposed regulations. It's neighborhood type, so there's some differences between the two development agreements. The neighborhood type for, which kind of is about the character and form and site planning of the property would remain traditional townscape. The entitlement currently under the development agreement is 90,000 square feet, and the proposed zoning cap is still 90,000 square feet. And the maximum height, both under the development agreement and as proposed, would be 85 feet. I don't know if there are any questions, but just wanted to give that kind of example. Okay? Why non, minimum non-residential density? This is one of two topics that there were a lot of questions and comments from both the committee members and public last week, so, or last meeting. There are significant amounts of unbuilt non-residential entitlement in both communities. As you can see, it ranges from over 50% to over 60%, and by putting in a minimum non-residential density, we would hopefully achieve about half of the remaining. So, it wouldn't be everything, it would only be half. Another point to make is that the traffic analyses that were done for each of the urban villages were dependent on having a certain amount of shopping and commercial in the community to reduce the number of trips. It's called internalization, where the trips stay internal to the project. Also, if there is not a minimum non-residential density, there could be thousands of jobs less than the EIS originally anticipated. And finally, we want to be, we want to use our land wisely and efficiently. Questions? Okay. And lastly, structured parking, why are we proposing that? For some areas, some topics in the development agreement, we are proposing to use central Issaquah standards. It should be noted that the central Issaquah standards, many started in the urban villages, started with Issaquah Highlands, and continued to evolve from our lessons learned and best practices through the Raleigh Development Agreement, and then on to central Issaquah. So, there is a strong link between what was in the urban villages and central Issaquah. Central Issaquah was a response to pervasive surface parking. That was about 75%, is the estimate in the central Issaquah area. And as well, we wanted to have smart use of our land, pedestrian orientation, and urban character. And we feel that those are the same goals as we have for Issaquah Highlands and some portions of Talis. We have made some adjustments. Any questions on that? Okay. That's my last slide. I said brief.
Yeah. You have other questions for Lucy? No?
Okay.
Are you sure? Okay.
Okay.
Then are we ready for public comment? Okay. So, so this will be for, I guess, both of the agenda bills. Agenda Bill 7524, end of the Talis Development Agreement, and also Agenda Bill 7523, end of Issaquah Highlands Development Agreements. And the reason that that's for both is because the same issues, we're deliberating the same issues. So, if you want to make comments about either one of those agenda bills, now would be the time to do it. So, as a reminder for people who came in after the meeting started, if you're, if you're here with a group, I ask for one representative from your group to speak, and if you're not in a group, you're an individual, welcome to speak. Please, if you can, limit it to new comments. If you've heard somebody comment before, it would be great if, if, when that person commented first, show us your support by raising your hand. And comments should be limited to, will be limited to three minutes. Okay? So, who would like to go first? Bruce?
Thank you. My name is Bruce Semple, and I live at 100 Timber Ridge Way, up in the Talis Development Area, and I'm a resident of Issaquah. AB 7524 is of considerable interest to our nearly 500 Timber Ridge residents, as evidenced by the representatives showing up here tonight, and by the petition already signed by 233 of our residents, and by 79 of our staff. Petitions were handed to the mayor's office yesterday. We are very proud of our retirement community, and believe we bring a lot of value to Issaquah, which in turn offers us so much in terms of services, green space, inspiring forests, and the mountain village atmosphere. We love it. Our building's presence is very much in evidence when entering Issaquah via SR 900. I'm sure you've all experienced it. This southern gateway to Issaquah is embellished by the impressive and expansive architecture and its well-managed landscaping. But we bring much more to Issaquah than a pretty face, by providing work for currently 249 staff, plus for many contractors. Unfortunately, though, so many of our employees do not have affordable housing options here in Issaquah and have to commute. Commuting on SR 900 and Talis drive to and from their shifts, particularly in peak hours and during inclement weather, can be a problem for them as it is for us, and our frequent service vehicles that come in along Falcon Way, and unfortunately, too frequent emergency services to our building. This brings us to our interest in AB 7524, and in urging you to end the Talis agreement and send it to the full council for authorization of the replacement regulations. Then we can have an opportunity for public dialogue about any proposed development or changes to zoning on Parcel 17B and on Talis in general. This will allow for constructive consideration of options that will take account of traffic and parking issues, as well as the overall impact of the beauty of Talis on this southern gateway. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Or if you want to raise your hand in support of what Bruce said. Okay, just about everyone. Thank you, very helpful. Next?
Good evening. My name is Karen Porterfield, and I am a member of the Talis Residential Association Board. Say that fast. I am here this evening to share the board's thoughts about the termination of the agreement. As you know, everybody in Talis is looking forward to having this finished. Given the status of the completion of the agreement, we are concerned, as a community, that the remaining development is consistent with what was originally envisioned and planned. Replacement regulations should be developed and approved so that we can end the agreement in a timely manner and move on to our final build-out. There are only a few parcels remaining in Talis that can be developed, and I would like to share with you the views of the board on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Seven and eight should be built in a manner consistent with the preliminary plat. Parcel nine should be developed in a manner consistent with the preliminary plat, and in the event that conditions do not allow for the preliminary plat, the partial, the parcel should continue to be zoned medium density, single-family, capped at 90 units, and we strongly encourage you to consider a 45-foot height limit, as reflected for single-family homes. Parcel 17B should remain commercial in nature and zoned urban village office. The 85-foot maximum height should be reevaluated, and the Talis Board strongly encourages the city to consider what the height limitation should be, given the impact of building on Timber Ridge. Utility Track D should remain open space and not be considered for residential development. Recently, the conversation has come up regarding the 100-foot buffer along 900, as called out by the Talis agreement. We strongly encourage the city to maintain the 100-foot buffer regardless of the presence of any retaining walls. We are asking that the city ensure that the development agreement terminate, and that the vision of Talis does not change, that the replacement regulations ensure that the remaining build-out of Talis is in line with the expectations of our community, of the people who live here, and the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Next? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just about everybody raised their hand. Next? I'm saying that for the people who are watching, because they can't see you.
Hi. My name is Cynthia Lesford, and I am a Talis resident, and my concern is the Bergsma property. I also agree that the development agreements should be terminated, but my understanding is the intent of the development agreement was to, for Talis to be a standalone community and not have satellite communities branching into it. So, I would like to see something in the document that states that that will not occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sorry. Support, feel, just raise your hands. Okay. Yeah, just about everybody again. Okay. Next speaker? Okay. Come on. I know you want to talk.
Good evening, council members. My name is Richard Hill. I spoke to you at the last meeting about the vested issue, vesting issue, and I just wanted to briefly state that on behalf of Regency and Safeway, that the recommendation of staff with respect to vesting is supported by them, and that in addition, the memorandum prepared by Jim Haney, the city attorney, is spot-on in terms of what, from my perspective, what vesting law is and what the current state of the law is. And the proposal to have projects be vested under the three criteria that are proposed under the replacement regulations, one, if there's a full, full invalid building permit application; second, if there's a full invalid subdivision application; third, if there is a development agreement applicable, which obviously wouldn't be the case here, is consistent with state law, is consistent with almost all of the jurisdictions in the state of Washington, and is appropriate for you all to adopt here as your replacement regulations. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any hands? Okay. A few hands. Next?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Malaney. I'm here on behalf of Shelter Holdings, and the comments that I'm gonna make tonight, I have four points to make. They apply to both development agreements, and they have to do with vesting, and they're issues that are important for the committee and the council to understand that haven't been addressed in either the staff memorandum or the city attorney's memorandum. The first point is that the replacement regulations do not address the tens of millions of dollars that attach to Shelter's property that were, of constructed mitigation. I would agree with Mr. Hill and the city attorney, and that the memo is largely a correct general overview of Washington's vesting law, and I don't dispute that the city can change the type of permits that it deems are vested to the minimum required by state law. But, and this is a really important but, those changes can only apply prospectively, not retroactively. The basic concept of the development agreement was that certain mitigation would be constructed to offset the impact of the allocated amount of allowed development. The development agreement does have a section on vesting. It's, this is the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, and that's Section 3.23. Under Washington law, vested rights are property rights, and under the development agreement, mitigation is expressly identified as one of the development standards that are vested to a complete application. Nothing in the replacement regulations or the various memorandum address how this multimillion-dollar mitigation will be treated. This is a huge unresolved issue, and the city should not adopt the replacement regulations until it is addressed. My second point is that Washington law does not support the concept of retroactively unvesting vested applications. Shelter has submitted a preliminary plat application, four site development permit pre-applications, and three site development permit applications. Under Washington's vesting law is premised on the idea of a date certain, which is the date a complete application is submitted. That's what establishes the legal requirements and regulations that a development is vested to. There's no support in Washington law for the idea that vesting naturally terminates, or that permits that, or applications that have vested can be unvested by the adoption of new regulations. It's, that very concept is just antithetical to the Washington's date certain approach, which is a fundamental principle of Washington vesting law. Shelter's position is that its preliminary plat and pre-applications and SDP applications are vested to the terms of the development agreement, and that the city has failed to follow the development agreement, review timelines, and processing of those applications.
So, Patrick, you're out of time.
Okay.
Okay. You want to, like, wrap up in one sentence?
Yeah.
Or state in one sentence your two other points?
Yes. My third point is that the city is proposing two separate vesting schemes that depend solely on where our property is located. Outside of urban villages, it's one, one set of rules, and inside the urban villages, it's another. And my final point is that the adoption of the provisional regulations will not lead to a community conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hands? One hand raised. Okay, next? out to the community and making this happen, because what I don't want to see is this is just a nice way to get this moving but doesn't necessarily mean real action and really getting out there and reaching out to the community, and what is it actually going to take if the community does decide that there are some changes to what we'd like to see from a code and regulation standpoint? So I really urge you to make it real, not just in this memo. And as far as, you know, the changes right now, I'll leave the vesting and all of that pieces up to the legal team and the developers, but I'm going to trust that kind of the intention is to put in place where we were at with the DA's for the Talis and Issaquah Highlands, and to the best of our ability, put in regulations that kind of hold true to what the original visions were. But I do think I would really push up focusing on where we want it to go and much more quickly putting in the regulations that are more representative of what the community would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Hands raised? All right, about a dozen hands raised. Next, who would like to go next? I'm not seeing anybody jump up. Okay, I'm going to call three times, and then we're going to be done. And remember, this is for both agenda bills, so we're going to be discussing both Talis' Development Agreement and the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. Okay, calling once. You have to come up to the microphone, ma'am.
I'm Colleen Purcell. I'm from Talis. I just hadn't planned on saying anything, but I'm very confused. Everything seemed to make sense to me from the first four to five speakers, but these last few speakers were speaking in legalese. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to me that somebody should explain what they were talking about. How is that going to affect us, who are residents of the community? Thank you.
Thank you. Who all agrees? A lot of people. Okay. And that's just the tip of the complexity iceberg, actually. So, who else would like to speak? I'm going to do a couple of last calls, and then we're going to be done. Again, this is both agenda bills, Talis and Issaquah Highlands. Going once, going twice. Okay, public comment is closed. Thank you, everybody. So, now we are at the deliberations part. I did some thinking today that, you all should know we don't get to talk to each other outside the meeting, because that would be a quorum, and so that's why if it looks like we're doing some things that look like we could have talked about them later or earlier, we couldn't, so we can't talk to each other. So, I'll tell my fellow committee members that I worked a little bit today on maybe us, I think we have to deal with the leftover issues that Lucy talked about, and I think we have, the one that's left for Talis is the vesting, is my understanding. And then we have all of the issues remaining for Issaquah Highlands, because we didn't take any votes last time. Is that your recollection?
It is, what'd you say for Talis?
Vesting.
I thought we addressed that as well already.
I think we addressed vesting together.
Yeah, FAR we did, for Talis.
Okay.
Councilmember Goodman, can I?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Lucy, would you mind explaining vesting?
Yes, I would, and I won't.
Because I think it's a really fair question that was asked, and it's a very complicated issue, and so if you could just, and you can do a phone-a-friend if you need to, but I think it would be very helpful.
I think the only thing I feel comfortable saying is that there are questions about permits that exist, projects that are in process, and a desire to try and provide some clarity about what their status is when the development agreement terminates and the replacement regulations come into effect. I think beyond that, it is a very legal matter in terms of the two different perspectives, and I wouldn't feel comfortable trying to describe that aspect of it.
So there are probably a couple of sentences in the memo that we received that might help, and they are, the concept of vesting refers to the right of certain land use permit applicants to have their development proposals processed under the local regulations in effect at the time when a complete application is filed. And so, one of the issues is for landowners who have been working on development proposals, at what point in the process are their proposals frozen under certain development regulations? And because the regulations are being proposed to, well, because they're changing from development agreements to, basically to zoning, then vesting is one issue that the council has to deal with. So, in a basic, that's a very basic, so the property owners are concerned about what standards will be applied to their land use permits. Okay? So hopefully that helps. So I was thinking today about the different questions that, you know, we need to answer, and I wondered if maybe the first thing that we should talk about, deliberate, make a decision about, is the newer one, and that's the provisional proposal, because that might change how any one of us feels about the regulations. I don't know that, but that's what my thought is. So, or is there another place that you'd like to start?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Well, so earlier, when we were talking about provisional, and I asked, was going to make a statement instead of ask a question, now I'm going to make my statement. I really like the idea of provisional. I think it is imperative that we end the development agreements. Not that they are bad, they've been great, but they create, this period of uncertainty creates a lot of anxiety, and we just need to bring an end to that. And we need to put replacement regulations in that make people feel very comfortable and then move forward. What the provisional does, in my understanding, is it gives us the opportunity to move forward with a set of replacement regulations for the development agreement, but it also recognizes that we're going to learn something as we go forward, and it leaves the door open that we could come back and revisit them. So as we learn more and as we continue the dialogue with the neighborhoods about what's important to them, it recognizes that we understand that we may not have everything right now, and we want to come back. And I think that's a really good idea, given the uncertainty that we're dealing with right now.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. We have, one of my concerns about the process that we've been going through is that the conversation frequently turns to vision. And I don't think that this process is about vision. I think this process is about what we heard a couple of the speakers say, and that is about regulations that closely mimic, as close as we can, what we had before, what we have under the development agreements now, in order to hopefully best achieve the vision that is in place. And it may be that the visions need to evolve, but the communities haven't been involved in that conversation, and this has not been a visioning exercise, it's been a replacement regulations exercise. So the provisional regulations, like you said, Lucy, since notice that this is good for now until we revisit, and then if we find that the regulations should change based on an evolved vision, then we can do that. We can certainly do that without provisional regulations. I like the certainty that provisional regulations provide, the certainty being that we will revisit the visions, and it forces us to do that.
Thanks, you too. And, trust me, I really, really do want to agree fully with your arguments about that. I think everything that Stacy just said was well said, Chris, you as well. There is, there needs to be, I'll call it revisioning, what have you. So that, I really want to go with that. However, as staff answered my question earlier, you know, there'd be replacement regulations that would end the DA, and I personally am not satisfied at all with the information we have on vesting. I submitted an email yesterday, and I don't have any answers to them yet. And I would actually ask, I think it's very critical that we are extremely clear on the vesting questions before we adopt any regulations, whether they just be standard or provisional, however we want to tag them, because that will end the DA. And I, there are unanswered questions about vesting. Apparently, I'm not going to get them tonight, I understand that. And so, if we have to have some other forum where we talk about this, then I ask for that, because I think those are very critical that we get that right. So, all the reasons about provisional, and the audience comments, and your guys' comments, I agree with that. But because it ends it, I don't think we have the vesting questions settled, and that would end it, or at least create something very, very definitive. And I want to make sure, before we adopt any regulations, we're 100% clear about vesting. And, so I'm looking for some type of commitment that I can get a follow-up to the questions that I've asked.
Okay, so what we have done in the past with outstanding questions is move items, make recommendations the best that we can, and knowing that you're not locked into your vote, I plan on making motions tonight to try to move things forward, whatever those votes may be. And then I would assume that you're going to get your questions answered fairly soon, and certainly before this would come to the full council.
Lucy's nodding her head. Yes?
So if the council member feels like he's got some questions that have not been answered adequately, and those questions are from the city attorney, I think that there is an opportunity to get clarification on that, you know, at a future opportunity before the council takes action on these agenda bills. So these agenda bills, assuming they come out of committee tonight, which is a big assumption, our expectation is they would not be before the city council for action until March 19th. So there's time to get resolution to any unanswered questions, I believe.
Yeah, and a month ago, I kind of did the same thing. I asked for more information before the next council meeting, and none was forthcoming by the time we had our council meetings, totally different subject. So I understand your ask, but that doesn't always work. So I really would prefer that, because I think it affects all of us. It's not so much a preference or opinion of mine, I think it's more of being certain where we are stance and what's the correct stance on vesting. I don't think we have that yet.
So, maybe, let me phrase it this way, and you can maybe help me understand where you are, because I don't know that I do. So, vesting, so the council has a choice and can make a choice to draw the vesting line in any place, I'm going to call it below where state statute is. So you could choose to be more lenient than what state statute says is a vested right, okay? That's something you can do or you don't have to do, but that's a council decision that you can ultimately make. Ending the development agreement is, I think, independent of the vesting conversation, because vesting is one piece, but ending the development agreement is a different piece. You can end the development agreement and draw the vesting line here, or here, or here, that's a decision that the council can make as a whole, right? And there's choices. They've been outlined to you before in previous memos. I don't know why deciding whether it's here, here, or here necessarily affects whether you end the development agreements.
You have, you cited previous memos, so Keith, you know, I sent an email with questions, and I don't have any replies yet. I mean, that's why I'm bringing this up. The, you cited just now, you mentioned some previous memos, and those are the ones I tried to bring to your attention. And at one point, there was a staff memo that was very clear last November, and now, without any explanation, that has changed. And I've asked for an explanation. That's just one example. And so, so, the thing is, the thing is, I, it's, so vesting, you know, can it, and really should it stand independent of adopting the regulations? I understand that point, but the, I think it is in the best interest of the city and of everybody that we, council member and staff, be 100% certain about these questions about vesting before formally ending the development agreements. As was mentioned tonight, there is language about vesting in the development agreements, and that's part of the clarity that I'm seeking, is how that pertains.
Nice question. Asked a question. I'm feeling a bit of disadvantage in this conversation, because I don't know what was in the staff memo that you wrote, Paul. So, I mean, what are the issues that you're having with vesting? If we could just kind of, in a few words, surface what the underlying issues is, maybe I could understand better.
Sure. Just, you know, from a memo in November, there was the claim that, that the previous position on vesting, which the administration had in 2017, that it was, that memo says, I'm looking, I'm trying to find my language, "consistent with vested rights doctrine and the decision of West Main v. Bellevue." And then we have the new position and the attorney's letter that changes that position and said due to some considerations and additional questions. They've changed, that's when they, they made changes to the vesting. So that's, those are in the track changes to last month's packet. You can see what the previous language was and what it is now. So there was a, there was that content from the memo in November, and now we've changed, and I don't have an explanation why.
So that's, so I can answer that. That's policy, that's not legal. So the previous administration-
If we could just kind of, in a few words, surface what the underlying issues is, maybe I could understand better.
Sure. Just, you know, there, from a memo in November, there was the claim that, that the previous position on vesting, which the administration had in 2017, that it was, that memo says, I'm looking, I'm trying to find my language, "consistent with vested rights doctrine and the decision of West Main v. Bellevue." And, and, and then we have the, the new position and the attorney's letter that changes that position and said due to some considerations and additional questions. They've changed, that's when they, they made changes to the vesting. So that's, those are in the track changes to last month's packet. You can see what the previous language was and what it is now. So there was a, there was that content from the memo in November and now we've changed and I don't have an explanation why.
So that's, so I can answer that. That's, that's policy. That's not, that's not, that's not legal. So the previous administration, the previous mayor, previous city administrator, who are now no longer with the city, it was their position that the recent action by the council with the moratorium set a precedent. That represent the council's perspective. And so that's what was brought forward with the development agreements as an initial proposal for the replacement regulations. As you know, those replacement regulations did not get adopted in 2017 and now we have a different mayor and a different interim city administrator. The perspective right now from the administration is that we should not provide vested rights beyond what's required by the state because what that does is it basically prolongs standards that are over 20 years old and that's not in the best interest of the community. That's the recommendation from the administration. It's not, it's not a legal position. It's a policy position.
Right. So the, so the language, all we got was additional consideration and questions. And I asked, well, so what is that consideration? So I didn't get an answer.
Are you talking about legal consideration or are you talking about what was considered?
What was considered.
I think that's...
So we provided, so Lucy, do you have that slide from the, like, for example, I remember it specifically at both the community meetings where there was the reason why the administration was changing its position on vested rights. It was like a five, four or five bullet slide? Do you happen to have that somewhere?
I think I have last time's presentation.
See if that comes up. So that was, that was part of the community outreach, was explaining why the administration was changing its position on vesting. So if we can find that, that'd be good.
So what about 323 in the DA that addresses vesting? That seems to be in conflict with your first bullet point there. That was one of the, one of our comments that we got tonight, did identify that section of the existing DA which does address vesting?
One or both of them?
It's from the Highlands.
Highlands, thank you.
So all I can tell you is they've made that argument to the city attorney, who is not in agreement with that position.
Yeah, sure.
So I, I understand where you're coming from, Paul. I mean, that makes sense. So is your perspective that we cannot move forward with, terminate either of the DAs until we resolve the vesting on both of them?
There's a question in the Highlands. I don't understand that there's a question in the Talis at all. And, and I, again, I'll say, I... I had some other questions as well and I don't have answers to them. And so I, I think it's very important that all of us understand and get to talk through those before we take action to terminate the development agreements.
So my understanding is if this committee wants to do that, that could happen potentially on the 5th in executive session.
So I was going to suggest, so, so we're hearing from most people that they would like us to move forward. We've had this in committee for a while. I think that there are opportunities to get your questions answered, Paul. There are distinct issues remaining for us to make recommendations on. And if you choose, if the committee decides to not make a recommendation about vesting, we could still move everything forward to the full council, which would be the 19th, March 19th. We could, we could deliberate vesting at the full council meeting and if necessary, talk about legal issues in executive session under one of the statutes that allows us to do that. But I'm, I really don't support holding this over for another committee meeting when we can't actually bring it forward at the full council. We have a full room, we continue to have full rooms. And I just think it's prudent to move it forward. I understand that you may not be comfortable with the vesting question, but we can move forward without that answered tonight. Or we can make a motion and you can vote no on it or abstain. There are some options. But I would propose that we deliberate the other issues and try to make recommend, make recommendations for those and move it forward. You agree, Chris?
I, I, I think that everyone would like to bring this to closure. And as I said earlier, the longer we sit in this limbo between DA and ongoing regulations, the more uncertainty there is and it causes a lot of angst and stress. And I would just like to, you know, to recognize that from all of you and say, let's move this thing forward and let's be done with it and, and provide some certainty and some life. Because the one thing I've heard from everybody who's talked is I just want to know that what we're going to get is what I thought we were going to get. So let's move this thing forward.
So the topic on the table was the provisional regulations?
Right. And I tied that to that. Because the provisional, it is adopting regulations, then that then formally terminates the development agreements. So that's why, that's why I say they're together. And I want to echo with you, Chris. I mean, I, I know Stacy feels the same way. I know everybody does. You know, let's, let's, let's take care of this and let's move forward. And, and, and we are, there's, there is a lot of good work here. There's a lot to be certain about. And, and we're very, very close. This is being presented as a package. And I, actually, I feel, this is not easy for me, actually. I feel pretty strongly about this. This is really hard to stand up against all this momentum and say, listen, I think this is pretty important. And I, and, and I, I'm asking for, I, I, I've already, you know, said what I'm asking for. It's, it's not easy. And if, and I'm, if we want, and I think this is pertaining to the Highlands, so I think we can move forward because there is no question, or challenge at all. But, but, and that's the problem. And it was said, and Keith, you're absolutely right. It's kind of like they are separate, but, but there's a, there's a general question about vesting that in my mind still needs to be answered as part of this deliberation. It has a material impact on the Highlands and not on Talis, so.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we, because I don't think that the vesting is, is an issue where you, as it relates to AB 7524, which is the Talis DA. Can we talk about just maybe taking a quick vote on that so we can get a sense of, of a victory?
So the... I'm thinking here. We can, we can try that. I'm trying to think of if that, okay. Sorry, thinking on the spot. So, um, do you want to make a motion?
Well, I, I think, so...
Is that what you're trying to do?
There were, there were four topics. You've already handled minimum non-residential density and...
Vesting is the only one left for Talis.
And provisional.
Well, and provisional.
That's all.
And so I guess my pause on the vesting question, just for one, is that my position on vesting is that it needs to be consistent. So that's what gave me pause, but...
That's fair.
So I'm, I'm happy either way. If you want to dispense with one, then we can.
You do have the ability at full council to adjust the vesting provisions if the other community's vesting is altered and the, and you decide to maintain the, that, if you feel that consistency between the two is important.
And I see the wisdom of doing, of making separate motions too, because we have separate agenda bills.
Right.
So with that in mind, is it okay if I make a motion?
Please.
Or does somebody else want to? I'll make a motion that the proposed vesting regulations, that we recommend to the full council that the proposed vesting regulations for Talis be adopted. Is that...
Chris, what do you think?
Did the, did the motion make sense or not?
I'm not sure I was paying attention.
Oh, at least thank you for acknowledging that. So the motion, the motion was that the proposed vesting, the ones that are currently proposed, that we recommend to the full council that those be adopted.
For Talis.
For Talis.
Second?
Yeah. Aye.
So any, do you think we should discuss that?
Well, the community's understanding is that the vesting would be terminated and the new regulations would be adopted.
So I think the one, I think the one piece that remains is whether you are also applying the provisional character to Talis.
That's a separate question. That will be a, would be a separate motion.
Right.
And so I know...
Can we talk about the vesting and Talis?
Yes. I am going to ask that we don't get people yelling from the audience, please. If you understood the question, that that was, maybe you can answer that and then please don't do that anymore.
So, so I think just to provide a, maybe a little bit of a decoder ring to what is being asked or suggested by the council committee right now is they are making a motion, it's going to be a little bit of a progressive motion as they deal with different pieces, but it's a motion to get rid of the development agreement and to adopt the proposed language on vesting, which basically means if you have a building permit or a subdivision plat, you would be vested, but everybody else is not. So I think for most of the folks in Timber Ridge who were hoping for that outcome, I think this is consistent with what you were hoping for.
And the, it was our last meeting that we, the committee made recommendations on the other, the other outstanding issues, the Talis proposed regulations, and the new one tonight is provisional regulations. So if you want to address the, the motion was seconded, I think, by some, did you second?
With three, you don't need a second.
Does anybody?
For what? What's the question?
Okay, so we don't need a second. So do we want to talk? Discuss?
Provisional?
No, vesting.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think I did, but Keith just addressed, I think, the point that needed to be made.
No, I think that, I don't think it's an important, given the build-out of Talis, vesting is not the issue that is in, in the Highlands. So I think we're in a, in a situation where we can move this one forward without having, whatever decision we make on the vesting will, in the Highlands, will not materially affect the outcome in Talis. So I would like us to move forward with the proposed vesting regulations. That being said, I think if the, at a future date, we revise the vesting regulations for the Highlands, we should go back and revise those to be consistent across all of them. But because I don't think it's material to this discussion, I say let's move ahead with it.
So I support the motion because I support the proposed vesting regulations, but I support them because they are consistent with, with the rest of the city and, which I think that, that's a, that, I think that's the right thing to do. And the, except where we have other areas that are covered by development agreements. So that's why I support it. You agree?
I, I, I support the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So then, do we go back to the provisional regulations policy question for Talis? So I will make a motion. I don't have to make all the motions.
Yes, you do.
I will make a motion that the committee recommends to the full council that the replacement regulations for Talis be provisional so that the envision, the visioning process can happen.
Second, and I want to discuss it. What is, could you, for everyone's benefit, mine as well, what's in the packet today? What is the, talk more about what this provision whole concept for Talis is? Anyone?
So what we talked about, I think what became evident in, in the public comments over the last few months of deliberation on this is there was a lot of conversation about the vision for both Isiqua Highlands and Talis and, and whether or not that 15 or 20-year-old vision still is relevant or whether the community is ready to have a conversation about evolving the vision into maybe something different. And as council member Goodman said earlier, the replacement regulations was not intended to be an opportunity to revision Isiqua Highlands or Talis. And so what the administration has proposed is to be clear that the adoption of the replacement regulations, whether it's both or just Talis, would be a provisional step by the city council with a commitment that would be identified in ordinance of when that community outreach would begin. As we heard from one member of the public, I think there was a request that it be sooner than 2019. I think there's staff resources and things that we need to think about and any direction that this committee might want to give the administration on that timing or the proposed timing would be helpful in terms of talking that through.
Okay, so my understanding is there will be an ordinance drafted to that in effect implements these replacement regulations. And there will be an element of that that commits the city to, and it's just part of the ordinance. It's just another part of the ordinance and said, here, here's the new replacement code or the additional code for IMC and here is this other thing, which is we are going to... And so we don't have any draft language of that and exactly what that is. But it's in effect, it is, you were proposing, complete by 2019, that there, we would go through a community exercise to, to re-envision, update the vision, something similar to what we're doing for the visions for the central area plan. We will complete that by 2019. In a sense, that will be the language and the ordinance that you provide.
That's what's being proposed right now.
I think the one clarification, it was in 2019, not by 2019.
Right. Yeah, not this year. As, and, I mean, we can talk about that. I mean, I think right now with the moratorium and other things that are on our work plan, trying to initiate a new public outreach in both villages would be a lot.
I'm extremely sensitive to the, the size of the work plan that you have. And I, we see it all the time on how much we're trying to judge. And so tacking something on, we have to be considerate of everything else that's on your plate. I'm aware of that.
Thank you.
So I, I support the provisional regulations status and certainly echo the, the comments we heard tonight. Let's get the revisioning done, but it really is a resource issue. And so I guess all we can ask is that we move it up, you know, as soon as we can. That's reasonable.
Yeah, I think I'm pretty clear. I'm, I think provisional is great and I like the, I like where we're going. I like the idea of making sure we get this right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So that takes care of AB 7524, the Talis replacement regulations development agreement. I shouldn't say that takes care of it, that takes the care of this committee's work and I believe at the end of these two agenda bills, we will be discussing when it goes to the full council, because it still has to go before the full council, and that will be no sooner than March 19th, but I believe the administration is recommending March 19th. That's the first time slot we have available. Chris?
Do we, do we need to make a motion to send it back to council?
No.
Okay.
It was referred, it was referred to us, the work being to consider and refer, and recommend back.
So just, just for clarity, just to make sure we all understand, so with this action, the agenda bill to terminate the Talis development agreement and enact these replacement regulations as proposed in tonight's packet, with the additional provision that we are going to follow up and revision, that's what this action does. This terminates the DA and it implements these, it doesn't make any other changes to the, to the agenda bill for Talis.
Other than the edits that were proposed within the packet?
It's in the packet, that's right. I'm referring to what's in the packet.
Okay.
All right, and, and it's my understanding, there may have been some requests from the public about some other changes, but that, that I don't think are in here, but the vast majority of what I heard about is we just approved and it are for, advancing to the full council for approval.
So, so the one public comment you heard about Talis to edit the replacement regulations, which we didn't talk about, was related to Bergsheim in, I mean, it was, you wouldn't necessarily write it that way, but I think the intent was that Talis would not connect to other.
Actually, I would say there were two.
Is there another one I missed?
Yes.
Sorry, whoever said it.
So there was one about connecting.
Yes.
And then there was one about the buffer and there was one about heights in parcel nine.
Oh, right, sorry Karen.
Okay, but I, I just tried to summarize what I thought we had just done.
No, I think that's real good, Paul, thank you.
Yeah.
So does the committee want a conversation about any of those three particular items?
I do.
Okay.
I, I would like to talk about them because, thank you for, thank you for bringing us back, because we were kind of going down a little bit of a, of a track there, but there were, there were a couple of edits there that I think are worth talking about. I am particularly concerned about the buffer, I don't understand why we would not have the 100-foot buffer that we already have, because that land exists today, doesn't it?
There is a 100-foot buffer, there are many, there are three exemptions as of today. After the buffer was originally applied to the community, SR 900 installed a variety of walls and so I think the question was, do the walls serve some of the same purpose as the buffer?
And I guess my question really is, as it relates to buffers, if they weren't buffers, what would they be? Because they exist today.
So, they, so mostly they are entry feature down here, pond with.
Lucy, can you move the mic closer to you?
Yes, sorry. So here's the Talis drive entry, this is the, the entry feature, this is a pond on a separate parcel, it takes up, this is a property line, this takes up almost that entire property, this property is actually not in Talis, this property here is about two-thirds ponds and then I believe this, this north end is critical area and then there is this parcel that was an expansion area and was added in the last year.
So if we cut the buffer down to 20 feet, which was what's in the replacement reg, what would the other 80 feet become?
So that would only be where there were walls, so for instance, here you would still have a 100-foot buffer except where the pond is.
Okay, but in the places where we had walls, what would the other 80 feet become?
It could be developable property.
Yeah, that's, I guess where I was going. I don't think that's really in the best interest of the community, so I think just again, in the interest of certainty, and I'm all about certainty today, I would really like to see us maintain the 100-foot buffer, because if we say, what would the other 80 feet become and it said it could become developable, I just reintroduce uncertainty into a community that I don't want to introduce uncertainty into. So I would really like to maintain the 100-foot buffer the entire length of SR 900 regardless of wall.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we modify the replacement regulations for Talis to include a 100-foot buffer for the entire length of SR 900 regardless of the existence of walls.
Lucy, are there potential, what are there, what could go wrong with that? What should we, is there anything we should be aware of if we?
It will likely make this expansion area undevelopable and it has a single, I think it has a single home on it, there might be a little bit of developable area less, left, but it would probably be undevelopable.
Okay, so I don't really have any issues with it.
Could you point out from, I'm sorry if you've already done this, where, how much of this is affected? Where is the wall now?
So this, this is my kind of crude estimate from doing street view, so where it is yellow, I believe it is approximately 10 feet tall, where it is orange, which is from about here in that segment, it is prob, there's a wall, but it's less than 10 feet. So then again, sorry, my mouse keeps disappearing, this segment again appears to be about 10 feet. I can't remember what my blue code meant, I think that that means that there's wall, but I'm uncertain how tall it is.
So I think the only piece that's germane to this conversation is that northern piece, where the wall's tall enough where it's private property, because right here you have, you have ponds and you have area that's not Talis, so that northernmost piece is, is where there would be a delta depending on which way you guys want to go. And I think, so I think the reason why the replacement regulations are written the way they are is the intent of that 100-foot buffer was a visual block from SR 900 to Talis. And as we talked about that, that existence of that wall basically blocks any view that you have to the property behind. And so, you know, if you want to retain the 100 feet behind the wall, that's absolutely fine, that's a decision you guys get to make. I think for us, we felt like it was redundant in, in some ways and so reducing it to 25 feet behind the wall, which would likely block any views, made sense, but again, this is, council can decide, obviously.
And that lot is developed now and there's, and is there, what's the ingress and egress?
The ingress, and let me just finish pulling this up on GIS, so there are steep slopes back here, so the ingress and egress has to be off of SR 900. This easement across the property is, you know, because of the wall and topography, this existing road would remain the access point, just for.
They have a, they have right, they have a right of way, they have an ingress, egress, easement across our, the pond property, basically, because the wall makes the rest of the property unreachable from SR 900.
So and where the mouse is, is approximately 100 feet. So there is, say from about here to, sorry, can't make it go away now, this area in here would be what would remain with the 100-foot buffer, they would have a slightly larger area if they didn't.
All right, so we're talking about, there's one landowner, private landowner, it's already developed, it's a home on there.
It's, you know, it's one house on a big parcel, so it's, it, you know, depending on how much is actually buildable, you know, some home builder might buy it and build four or five houses in there, who knows?
It's, the 100-foot buffer applies now under the development agreement?
Yes.
Regardless of the wall?
Right.
So this would be consistent?
Yes.
Other questions?
Did, did that landowner weigh in at all?
No, the person who, we've had discussions with someone who may be interested in buying that property and they are interested in changes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so in the buffer, since the buffer applies now?
Yep.
Then I'm in favor of keeping it in light of that information.
Okay.
In particular.
Is there a motion?
There is.
Yeah, there is.
Are you ready to put the vote?
Let's vote.
You ready? I'm seeing that you're not.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was opposed?
I'm standing.
Two, four, and Paul stands. Okay, the next.
The, the, it was building height in.
Nine, was it nine or?
Seventeen, 17B.
Okay.
Was it 17B?
No, it was not.
It was parcel nine.
Oh.
So, so I guess, there's two pieces of this that I guess I would start with maybe and then let you guys say what you want to say. So if, you know, the way it was described is right now there's, there's, there's an existing preliminary plat for parcel nine and, you know, that would create single-family lots and homes would be built on it. The suggestion was if that can't move forward to kind of basically downzone it, and those are my words, to single-family and 45-foot-high building heights. That would be basically a downzone. Right now, we haven't talked about downzoning any parcels in either village, really, so.
Those have separate, separate issue? Maybe not, separate issues. Anyway, go ahead, sorry.
So I, you know, so we, you know, again, we, we haven't suggested kind of removing any rights from any property owners as part of this ending of the development agreement. If, you know, if that wanted to be a conversation as part of the provisional community outreach, you know, that's clearly, I think, their game.
Right now, it was zoned, currently it's zoned medium density, which would allow either single-family or multifamily and 60-foot heights would have been in place for either single-family or multifamily.
If you look at the replacement regs, single-family is 45.
I, I said right now, under the, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't clear, I didn't define my terms, right now meant the development agreement, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and you're correct that if something is zoned, single-family, only single-family, it would be 45 feet, but multifamily has 60 feet and, and that is consistent even if it did become single-family with the way that the, the regulations that would apply under the development agreement. So that would be a change from what is currently allowed.
I think that's a really interesting point, Lucy, it's the difference between what's currently allowed and what's currently envisioned. So what's currently allowed versus what's been, so what's envisioned is what's currently in the preliminary plat and so the preliminary plat is less than what, so that's what, I'm just all about expectations today. So what the expectation is, is it's going to look something like what's in the preliminary plat that's been submitted. So what's allowed is more than what's currently envisioned in that preliminary plat. So what I want to rationalize is those two, two things. So I recognize that that is, we're going to vesting here for a second, that's vested, so if they are able to move forward with development as currently platted, cool, everybody, it's good. The question that I think we're wrestling on this one is if for some reason parcel nine is not developable as currently platted or the owners choose not to move forward with that plat plan, which they could, I want to make sure that what we put in place delivers on the expectations of the community, which is something less than what is allowed today. So I guess I like, I mean, we, this is, this is a question that I just want to throw out there, so we, we went from current, which is UV, medium density, to medium density multifamily versus medium density, single-family. And if I read the, the definition of single-family, which is single-family detached, single-family attached, accessory dwelling units, home occupation, temporary seasonal use and group home, that sounds kind of like what we envisioned versus multifamily, which is more than one unit or rental housing, live-work units, senior housing, clubhouses and accessory, daycare center, all uses allowed in the single-family zoning except accessory dwelling units, which doesn't exactly sound like what we want. So I don't know how we got to multifamily over single-family, I don't even really quite know where this gets discussed, because I mean, one of the things that I'm struggling with in this whole thing is replacement regs versus zoning. So we're going to do the replacement regs, but which replacement regs are we applying to which parcels? How did those decisions get made? So, oh, anyway, that's, that's my, kind of getting all balled up in the 45-foot thing, but it's, how did we come up with multifamily versus single-family and would single-family be more aligned with the expectations of the community than multifamily?
What's different between what's under the DA and the proposal, except that MF is after you, urban village, I make, I didn't?
Right, so the medium density that was allowed in the development agreement did not, it was residential, but it did not specify whether it was single-family or multifamily. So either would have been allowed as long as it fell within the density range. And so that's why when we moved to the zoning, we picked multifamily rather than single-family.
Because multifamily allows both.
Right.
So to help your thought process.
Thank you, sir.
Let me help you, because I think doing, so there, there's really two things you could do in, if you're trying to go where I think you want to go. One is put what's in place here, what's being proposed, which I think, we think is analogous, even though that's not what they are planning to do there, they could do that. So, so you could leave the zoning as equivalent, which is what was being proposed, but then, then through the, the community outreach visioning, if somebody wants to talk about a different vision for parcel nine, that could ultimately lead to a downzone and there's a community outreach process that could be very deliberate and not feel like something that gets done really quickly. That's one choice. Another choice is you could go ahead and basically say, you're vested to your plat application and we're going to now go ahead and downzone you as part of this process and as long as you want to move forward with your vested plat, you can, but if you decide not to, now, now you have single-family that's allowed there, not multifamily. So they have what they, in theory, have asked to do, you're not taking that away, but if that should happen to not, they choose, if for, whether they choose or whether. But if that should happen to not, uh, they choose, if, for, whether they choose or whether there's another reason why they can't move forward with that application and have to start over again, you're relegating them to single-family only.
And, and the one thing I would add is that would require a public hearing when we go to council.
Because it's a downzone.
Because it's a, a significant change.
So, um...
We've done that.
My, so, my thoughts are that, uh, the, the, I think I prefer the provisional zoning route, because otherwise it sets up what I don't believe is an appropriate way to make regulations decisions, and that is parcel by parcel. That, I understand the concern, but I don't think that's the appropriate way to handle it.
I, I think I agree with you. But I'm not sure that I do, because, um, the fact that it got designated multifamily versus single-family, um, it's all about whether or not you're, you're, the lens you look through it, that we looked at how we, so not being parcel by parcel, but the lens we look through it is what was expected versus what is allowed. I mean, what was, you know, so what was allowed was, was, was multifamily, but what was expected was single-family. So whether, how it got proposed was really an artifact of which lens you look through, not an artifact of some parcel-by-parcel arbitrary decision-making process.
So let me add maybe another piece that might help. So, um, so the difference with parcel nine as opposed to maybe some of the other parcels that might have had similar medium-density classification is those built. And so if they built out as a single-family subdivision, we as staff said, that's what it is. Because now you've got individual owners on individual lots, and they've got one house, right? But here, you still have a property owner that has the rights to 90 units. And, you know, the decision that gets made, you know, the decision that, that they use to ultimately decide to move forward with a single-family plat or something different, we don't know what that is right now. So, so we left that as a decision for them as the property owner, um, as opposed to saying, we're assuming that just because you have a preliminary plat, you're going to go all the way to building permits and, and single-family homes. So, so that's, I mean, that's how we, that's why it, this one ended up maybe a little bit harder than if they had, I mean, if they had already built out their subdivision, we wouldn't be having a conversation, right?
And I, I, I don't, where am I wrong? That, that proposed, the replacement regulations, don't they allow the same that they're different? Then the, the development agreement is different? It's different.
Aye.
So the, I think the difference, even though they're both called medium-density, is that the density assignment in the development agreement did not specify the unit type. It just gave the density range.
Is the height the same?
Yes.
I heard what the, what the...
Well, I, if I can put words in Chris's mouth, and, and you can tell me that I'm misunderstanding, I think, so the, um, if there was nothing on parcel nine, um, what we would say is, um, medium-density, single-family or multifamily, 60 feet. So the analogous zoning with the replacement regulations would be medium-density, 90 units, 60 feet. I think, I think the distinction, um, that Councilmember Ray is identifying is that this has a preliminary plat for single-family identified on this property. Single-family does not allow 60 feet, and that, um, that should be care, that is created an expectation and should be carried forward.
Those were good words.
Okay, okay.
I, I'm not sure, I, I don't agree with the expectation part. I mean, whenever we've been using the word expectation, it's been about kind of the original intent, uh, kind of the, some of it soft, uh, and then, and then, and now, and now that we're replacing this, it's based upon what's been built. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think that the extension of the expectation ones, I, I don't, I don't agree with. And, um, I, I would support just as proposed, because it is consistent with the current DA. And, and I'll say as well, no one knows what's going to happen there anyway. I mean, if anything. I mean, this is, so there, we don't know what's going to happen there.
So, a question, clarifying question. Would it sat, do you think it satisfies the concern if there was, if it, if we thought about it as a cleanup, that the only inconsistency, that the only issue would be that single-family can't be built to 60 feet? Or, and that would, so is, it's almost a cleanup, then it is a change? Then it, you know what I mean? It's, because if you can't build a single-family home to 60 feet anyway, it almost doesn't even need to be modified. But if you want to make it clear, sorry, 45, if you, if you want to make it clear that you can't have single-family higher than 45 feet, um, is that, am I getting that right?
Well, I, I think it really, it really comes down to, and I think Lucy actually did a better job of describing this than I did, which is, the way it's currently platted, they're single-family, one unit to a lot development. So when, so, and this is where I, I disagree with you, Paul, on the expectation. So the expectation of the community is, we are going to have 90 single-family homes on that parcel, and that we may. But what we don't want to do is, is them to, you know, say, well, that was then, and this is now, now we're going to put in, um, multifamily, and we're going to, it's still only going to be 90 dwellings, but we're going to be really tall, and, and they're going to be rentals, and, and, you know, we've got a whole different model. And so what I'm looking to do is to, to try to ensure the consistency with what was originally envisioned for that parcel. Now, if they move ahead and they build it as platted, you know, that's groovy. But, um, what I don't want to do, and I don't, what I think the community doesn't want to do, is get into a situation where we're a couple of years down the road, and we've stabilized the hill, and now we're building, um, buildings that are significantly taller than was originally envisioned. And, and it's, it changes what people expected in that, in that parcel. The, the answer to it, and thank you, Lucy, because you were helpful in me understanding this, is simply to, to zone it as, uh, as single-family, because then your height is in line with what's currently proposed, your land uses are in alignment with what is currently platted, and it's very consistent with the neighborhood's expectation. If we say, nah, we think it's going to be multi-use, then we open it up to a whole bunch of other possibilities that were not what was originally envisioned for that parcel and what was not originally, or not currently platted for that parcel. So that's my reason for pushing on this one.
Okay. So are you wanting to make a motion? Are you wanting to, uh, there's options. One of them is to make a motion and recommendation now. The other one is to, um, do it at the council level. And to the extent that Lucy wants to provide more information, we can do that. Looking for what all, what you guys would like to do.
The only, the only thing I would say about the second scenario you described, Councilmember Goodman, is that, um, we would need to know if we need to hold a public hearing. At the, um, on the 19th.
Thank you.
Before making a decision.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd, I'd like to, uh, move that we change the proposed designation on parcel nine from UV MF to MV SF, and that we, um, schedule a public hearing can, at the same time as the next council meeting, or on the, on the March 19th council meeting, to address the change in zoning.
So the, so I'm not, I don't think that I'm opposed. I think I'm sort of, um, uh, very warm to the idea. I'm just not, uh, we're not going to get all of our answers, we're not going to get all of our answers tonight about unintended consequences. Does this mean that the DA's don't end? The DA, that DA doesn't end until that process happens? I, those are the kind of questions I have.
Okay.
So, um, just, um, sorry. Because this was a little bit of a, I want to say a curveball.
It is a curveball.
Uh, I guess the question for the committee is, do you want to hear from legal counsel representing parcel nine? Do you just hear what they might have to say about the proposal? Or no?
Are they here?
They're in the front row.
I don't know who Ollie represents. Sorry. So I'm, um, so I'm a little torn, because it is a curveball. I'm not, um, it just sets up, you know, an opportunity for others to say, you don't want to think, know what I think about this? So I'm really, that's what I'm talking about with the, I mean, we don't know what all the unintended consequences are. And so I'm, um, I'm happy to consider, more fully consider it when it's at the full council. We can get more information. Staff can talk to property owner and their council. But I'm personally not super excited about a late-breaking issue, trying to be fully vetted here when we didn't have all the information. Like I said, not that I don't support the idea, so that's kind of where I'm at.
I'm sympathetic to your argument, but I feel the right thing to do is to go forward with as proposed.
I...
So I'm not seconding it.
And we don't need a second, apparently. But I agree that, um, I, I would be, um, happy to entertain it at the full council with more information.
Let me with, um, I'd like to withdraw the motion. I think you're right. I think that we need to vet this a little bit more.
And then it can be raised again at the council meeting? And, um, so I...
Yes.
Okay.
We will provide some additional information prior to the council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other issues?
The connection issue.
Oh, Burisma. Connection. Okay. So... That's another one of those that is a late-breaking question that I don't know that we have all the information about, and that, I don't know that, so my concern would be that we don't know what the parameters are of what we can do with that property. Who owns that connection? Maybe it's all city property. I, I, feel free to talk, but I'm concerned about that one.
Well, I guess my question would be that there are elements of the development agreement that specifically say tie to adjacent properties. I am not saying that we should do that. I'm just saying that that may be an appropriate thing to deal with through the provisional aspects, um, looking at, uh, the vision of the community and whether that is still accurate for, for the community.
So there's, um, so this is a little bit more complicated than just Burisma. So there's also a parcel south of Timber Ridge and, um, the office parcel that is also within the city. And it really cannot be accessed off of SR 900, because it's the, on the inside of the curve of the road. And, well, it, it would be hard to provide an access point out onto SR 900. So there, at some point, it was thought of to be another potential expansion parcel of Talis, but, uh, and it went through the EIS, but ultimately didn't make it into the development agreement. So there's Burisma on the north. There's another parcel to the south. And then because of the change to the PAA, most of the stuff next to Seven is now outside of the city's jurisdiction, so it's pretty much off the table. So you've, but you do have two potential connections to non-Talis parcels that are, that are at play here with this suggestion.
I'd like to, um, I think it's a really interesting point and something that, it's, it's another, as you, uh, point out, curveball. I think it's something that warrants some deliberation, but it's not something that I think needs to stop us moving forward. It doesn't need to be part of the replacement, replacement regs for, um, for the DA. But it is something I think we need to vet more fully in, in this body. But I, I would like to, um, not move forward with that tonight. We don't have enough, not near enough information to really address that one.
Okay. Then I think those are all the issues for that agenda bill? Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing those up. So the next item is the agenda bill, 7523, the Iskua Highlands, um, replacement regulations. So it was my understanding from earlier that, uh, we are going to address, do you want to address vesting under that agenda bill at the full council?
Yeah, I think this is when you want to take your break, though.
I think so.
And Keith had mentioned, I, I, I'm having a discussion of whether or not this should be handled under executive session. You said that, you had suggested that.
I did. I think that it's a, um, so your, your memo, which came out, and I thought Emily talked to you today, so if that didn't happen, my apologies, I thought that's where that went. It was a combination of, uh, some items that were administration position and some items that were legal and understanding from the Agger Murphy Wallace memo. Just to give you a sense for what we asked the city attorney to provide, we did not verbalize what we understood from this last committee meeting. We had them watch this so that they weren't getting it through our lens. So if they didn't answer your questions, um, my apologies for that, but they, I think, tried to hear what you guys were asking and tried to provide what it is they thought you were asking. So if there was a miss there, I don't think it was intentional, it was just a miss. But because we're talking about issues related to vesting, uh, which clearly we have impacted property owners, um, you know, there, that might be a better conversation, because that could be, that, there has already been threats of litigation by, um, a property owner. So I think that that might be better handled in executive session.
So it's been suggested by Chris that this is the time we, maybe we want to take our five-minute break? Because we're almost, we're almost two hours in, and...
Yeah.
And we have Iskua Highlands yet to go.
Yeah, we do. We have a bit of work there.
Okay. How about take five?
Take five.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't see him up there. Okay, we're back in session. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Bill 7523, and we have been handling this one as a companion, 7524, the end of the development agreements. And before break, we had talked about, I'm going to confirm with the committee members, waiting on the vesting question until there are, we have an opportunity to have some additional questions. Paul has additional questions that he would like answers to or has quest, outstanding questions, no answers, right? And so-
Correct. So that's being deferred back to the full council?
Yeah, we are deferring to full council, back to full council for that.
Okay.
Then the issues we have left are provisional regs, FAR, structured parking, I believe. Do you have, yes?
I have one more.
What?
TDRs.
Oh.
I bring that up every meeting.
You what?
I bring that up every meeting.
I'm not trying to purposely forget it.
No, no, staff dropped it.
Okay, so, which one would you like to deal with first? Provisional in the same order? We did vesting first when we talked about Talis, and we decided to take a vote. And so vesting first with Iskua Highlands, we decided to defer that, so then the next item up in the same order would be provisional, if you would like to start there.
As described earlier, provisional, this idea to strike an ordinance, say, here's some new code, update the IMC, and we're committing ourselves to, to go back and engage the community and readdress, you know, the vision for that area. And may drop in there, probably should have a conversation about the whole city. I mean, it's, we are kind of doing these areas. If that, that's, that concept I'm fine with, absolutely fine with, for the reasons that were given. But, but provisional is, still would be about, it's the timing of that. It still would formally end the DA. And I need, and I think all of us need to have that conversation about vesting before we conclude the DNA, the DNA, the DA.
That too.
So, so it's, it's, so the concept I'm fine with. It's timing.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
I don't understand the-
Before the development agreement is ended, won't the council have, I mean, you either, you may not get the answer you want, but you get, and, I mean, that the council, I mean, what, and by that, what I mean is-
To be clear, is that there isn't an answer that I want. I want, I want clear understanding, I want clarity.
Right. And I guess my point is that on, that, that the provisional aspect does mean that the development agreement is terminated, but it also means that the council has reached, each council person has reached a conclusion on the bundle of things that come with that, including provisional. So I, that's where I'm kind of getting lost in the sequence because I, I understand that you have outstanding questions on vesting that, that you need answers to before you're going to vote. And I guess, does, does the nature of those answers change whether whatever is adopted might be provisional?
I thought I'd just answer that. The concept I'm fine, it's the timing. I think, I want the, before we would have a vote on replacement regulations, provisional or not, we must answer these questions about vesting before the final termination, provisional or not. Concept of provisional, I'm fine with, which is simply an extra line that says, get back out to the community and revision. It's timing.
Right, but isn't it timing for everything?
I-
Well, it's, it's regulations. It's, yeah.
I don't think it's a matter of whether or not we are provisional or these are just new regulations. The same issue applies, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a provisional specific objection. It's really, it really goes back to, and now I'm going to see if I can put words in your mouth. It's really, we have to address vesting before we can end the DA.
It's my recommendation that we are all, we have that, all that information.
I, I think we have to reach a decision on vesting, we have to reach a decision on vesting before we end the DA.
I don't, didn't, I don't understand why that's even an issue.
It's not. So it's only an issue-
That's the-
Because, because the regulations propose, now have a proposal for vesting, and, and we might want different language.
Right, but the provision, if you're, if you're comfortable with the provisional, the concept, and you're not going to vote for regulations that you don't feel have addressed whatever elements you feel need to be addressed, then you're either going to say I'm not ready to take a vote, or I'm going to vote against it because I don't think it's timely. So I, I'm not sure what not making a decision on provisional achieves at this point, and,
So what I heard, what I heard was council member Winterstein said, "I support the provisional suggestion." He has questions about vesting that he needs to have answered. There may be other council members that have questions about vesting that needs to be answered. I think all that you're hearing, all that I'm hearing tonight is that the council shouldn't take an action on the replacement regulations if they have questions about vesting. So I don't know that there's any issue with that statement. I think y'all should get your questions answered before you take an action on the replacement regulations. I don't know that anybody's saying that shouldn't happen.
Right.
I think we're all saying, yes, let's do that. And right now, we've kind of targeted the fifth to accomplish that, I think.
So are you saying that you're not comf, so if I were to make a motion about provisional regulations, you're not comfortable in a vote on, because that's when you raised it, when I said, are we ready to discuss the provisional regulations issue? And then you were talking about the timing, which I don't understand. The, I don't know that the provisional has anything to do with timing because the DAs would end just the same, but they would end with provisional regs.
Maybe this helps. Drop the word regulations and just say, you know, we are, we're proposing another element to the ordinance that commits the city to revision. And if that's the question, fine. Because, because, you know, with the word regulations in there, it sounds like I'm saying, you're asking me to go yes or no on the regulations. And that's not what you are.
No, I think the question is, yes or no on, are they provisional regulations or are they-
But, but, but we're not putting, there's no, there's no, so provisional, there's no, there's no ending. It's not, the only thing that's different is something in the ordinance that says, we're going to, we're going to go back to the community and revision. That's, that's what provisional is. It's nothing more than that. So, so, so if you're, if that question is, do you want a section in the ordinance that commits the city to, to go back and revision, then I say yes.
Okay, then I'll make the same motion that I made for Talis, and then I'll substitute the word Iskua Highlands, propose that the, we recommend to the full council that the regulations be provisional, so the visioning exercise can happen. So we don't need a second? We want to talk about that?
And I'll say, it's just as, assuming that voting on this motion is not a vote on the regulations, I agree. On the full body of the regulations and their-
Oh, I finally get what you're saying. Yeah, no, it doesn't presuppose anything because we're going to talk about FARs and-
So I tried to rephrase this, right? Do you agree or disagree with me? I said, I think provisional means that there is a line in the ordinance that says, we will go back and we're committing ourselves to go back and revision. Is, is, do you agree with that? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
We talked about it during the Talis discussion.
Okay, all right, I just, all right, I don't-
Well, I mean, I apologize that we don't understand. It just means that, you know, we're not understanding you.
Okay, well, that's, I was trying to be clear, I wasn't getting any feedback if you understood it or not, so thank you.
Well, yeah. You know, I'm not saying it's your fault, I'm just saying that I don't understand and I don't think Chris did either. So it sounds like that, so, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry, making notes. Okay, so skip the vesting. The next I have on my list is non-residential density discussion issue, which is FARs. So-
This is the same slide you've seen. I mean, I have other slides if there are specific questions, but-
Right. So I will, so I'll move things along and I make a motion that, move to recommend to the full council that the proposed FAR regulations for Iskua Highlands be adopted. We don't need a second, so I'm hearing. We're going to go with that. I'd feel more comfortable if we had a second in case somebody said, okay, undo them later. Okay, discussion?
Well, I, so I'm struggling with this. And, and I had an opportunity to meet with Keith on Monday. We talked about it quite a bit. I, I understand your reasoning. And, and regardless of anything that's in the pipeline, just take that off the table. I think that this will, it puts a floor, which I think would, which only develop, that will probably result in any, un, any commercial development that would come in the future to be pushed out. I, I think that this would definitely delay for an unknown period of time when any commercial development would be completed. And so that's, so I'm, I under, so thank you for your memo. I mean, it's all very passionately written, the idea, I think we had comments a month ago, and I've repeated it to some people, you know, one member of the public who's here this evening said, you know, it was, it was live, work, play, I'm not ready to give up on the work yet. And I, and I get that. I think the, what we just talked about with provisioning, making it provisional or, you know, a committing to go back and kind of readdressing kind of the vision for that with the community and then any resultant changes would make as a result, that makes sense to me. And, and, you know, you know, I would, I'd really prefer that as a result of that process, we adopt some type of minimums or not.
I find the numbers that you put up there striking in terms of the commercial and retail build-outs in both the urban villages. And this is where I, I think that provisional is extremely important and reestablishing the vision is extremely important. Because if our vision is memorialized in those numbers, that we are at, you know, less than 50% of retail and commercial in the Highlands, we will never get there with low density- than 50% of retail and commercial in the Highlands, we will never get there with low-density utilization of the remaining parcels. So, if that's the vision of the community, then the FAR regulations as written make sense. I don't know that that's the vision of the community. So, that's why we have to ask that question, to go back and say, is that really what we wanted? Or do, are we okay with property that is lower density in the short term and a path towards higher density? And, you know, last, our last meeting, you made a, to me, a very compelling argument, Paul, which was University Village, which has always held up as the gold standard of, you know, way cool places to shop. When I was a student at the University of Washington, it was a strip mall. And, and it evolved over time. So, I think we need to go back and revisit with the community what they, what is more important to them, short term, long term? Because I think you're right. If we move forward with this proposal, we may find that we get no development at all, and that may not be in the community's best interest. But I'm also struck with the vision, which said, we're going to have commercial, and we're gonna have retail, and we don't. And so, the, the development agreement spelled out a vision, and we have not delivered on it, and we do not have the real estate left to deliver on it without higher density.
I completely agree with Chris. So, the, so we've heard, you know, we've heard from folks that, you know, maybe we can't get the commercial, maybe it's, we don't have the ability to get the commercial. And, and maybe that's true, but we haven't gone through that exercise ourselves. We're hearing from some people, some folks, property owner, that that's not true, or that that's, that we're not gonna be able to get that, certainly in the short term, and maybe not for a very long time. I think the risk, I think Chris identified the risk, the risk of not adopting the FAR is during this exercise with provisional regulations, if that's what we do, and we do the, the visioning, then we get, get something that is not consistent with the vision as it is now. And, but if we adopt these regulations now, then I think that is the best opportunity we have to try to hold the line. And I don't think, like I said earlier, this is, this entire replacement regs process was not about, was not a visioning exercise. And I just don't think that that's my job here, is to determine what that vision should be. We already have that. So, I, I, for all the reasons that Chris gave, and some that I gave, I support the proposed FAR.
I have a question for my fellow committee members. Those numbers, are they goals, targets, maximums, minimums? Do we, do you know why we had those, those square footage entitlements for commercial and retail? And what, what that number represented?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say, we thought that's what we needed to achieve the vision of the Highlands, and to make it that live, work, play, integrated community.
Were they minimums?
Well, they, they were maximums.
Yeah, they're maximums. And, and the current, the current DA doesn't have a, a minimum. So, that's my, that's, that's where I'm coming from, is that those are maximums, there is no current minimum.
So, the FAR.
And yes, it's not nearly where, you know, in terms of the square, I apologize for interrupting, but because, you know, yes, I, I see those numbers. And, and but, to me, then that's being most consistent, you know, with, there's, there's, basically, there's a conflict. I mean, you could, you know, Poly, Polygon, not Polygon, excuse me, Port Blakely, you know, is, all right, you can look at that and say they didn't deliver. You know, 20 years is up, and they didn't deliver. That, I think that's, that's important, and that's in, and, and not out of intent, not out of a lack of intent or an effort of trying. So, so, but there is no minimum there today. And I think if, that's why I, I would rather not there be a minimum, but it comes about as a result of this revisioning, then, then we know that it is something that people want.
So, what's been proposed is half the FAR that would be necessary to get all of that entitlement. The, it was not only, it wasn't just a number that was thrown out there, that was what was expected with the initial, with the Microsoft build-out. It, it wasn't just a number that was thrown out on the dartboard, is, is my understanding. So, I lost my thought. Anyway, go ahead, I think.
Well, I'll pile on for you. But I have a question for, for Lucy. So, how much of the residential entitlement was built in the Highlands?
Not all of it, but it's all been purchased, and it's all in land use permit process.
So, it all will be built?
Yeah, so we, we were pretty successful in building out all of the residential. And part of the, part of the deal was, we wanted to have a balance in the community, that's my understanding, that, that balanced residential, commercial, and, and retail. And, so sure, we, we might not get it all, but we're way out of balance right now. And, and, and I'm okay, I mean, I'm more than okay, I'm like way down with it if, you know, we go out to the community, and they say, no, you know, we, we, we don't want that, that was, that wasn't, that wasn't important to us. But, it's, it goes back to my, regardless of which development we're talking about, it's all about expectations. And my belief right now is that the Highlands community has an expectation that there's gonna be a certain level of commercial and retail in that development, and we're not in position right now to deliver on that. So, it's, you know, this may be the ultimate timing question, again, of, you know, what comes first, but I think we need to say, if we say we are going to not do FARs, or we're gonna do smaller FARs, and then we start to develop, we, we can never go back. And, and, and one of the reasons why I was a big supporter of the provisional requirements is it gave us time to say and ask and see if this makes sense. Because otherwise, we had to make it, we had to jump off the cliff. And we had to say, we're going this way or that way. And this way, we can say, all right, we're going this way, and then we're gonna go reevaluate. And we might come back, you know, 18 months from now and say, you know what? You know, maybe that's not the right way to go. We've, we've talked to the community, and, and they're much more into something like that, then I think we reevaluate. But if we start with lower-density commercial, then, then it doesn't really matter what the community says, because we can't go to high-density commercial.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way. And, you know, we have a vision, and until the community tells me otherwise, then my understanding is that that vision is in place. And anything less than that allows us to get exactly what we don't want in the vision, which is suburban, strip mall, not urban villagey. And, so, again, if that's what the community wants, we can do that. But the community has not weighed in on this discussion. The community has been to a few meetings where the question has not been about vision, it's about use of specific land, which I appreciate, but that's not been the question.
I wanted to make one comment about Microsoft. Just like when we did the central area plan, it was kind of like, oops, you know, we, we forgot to put into the calculus that we had a global 60 company in the midst of the central area, that being Costco. And when they wanted to do a DA, and they didn't want housing, we, oh gee, we should have thought about that. And, and because, and I just point that out because that's such a unique circumstance to have an employer like Costco in that area. And then when, when Microsoft owned that land, and what that promised, I, I think that was a, that was a very, perhaps once-in-a-lifetime type opportunity. There's not a lot of companies around that want to come in and build and, and deliver that many, that ratio, that, that number and ratio of overall jobs at those levels of pay that, that we know that Microsoft does. And, and when that, but then that ship sailed. And, and, and I just want, I want to point that out, is that as we go forward, whether there's a minimum FAR or not, as we go forward, I, I just, it's, it is a very unique circumstance that we have, and we missed that opportunity. And, you know, there's, the chances of us, of getting something similar back are extremely, extremely low.
Yeah, and that, that may be the case. One of the things that concerns me too about the conversation, about whether we are able to attract a commercial, or enough commercial that we could meet even half of that. I'm nervous assuming that that's true, because we have a central Isqwa plan that assumes that we are going to attract a lot of commercial. And so, I'm not at all comfortable with the assumption that we're not going to attract a significant amount of commercial space. We may not be able, or, yeah, commercial space, we may not be able to. But I think we need to do our own work on that, and we haven't talked about that. But I'm super concerned about the underlying assumptions that have been talked about as part of this process. Oops, any more discussion? Ready to take a vote?
Let's do it.
Okay, so, motion on the table is to adopt, to recommend to the full council to adopt the proposed FAR regulations as they've been presented. All in, is that right? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's opposed? Okay, thank you. So, I'll just get us started again. I will make a motion to recommend to the full council that the proposed structured parking replacement regulations be adopted.
Can you spend two minutes to refresh us on the structured parking regulations?
Sure. So, those are not in the replacement regulations. They come to the urban villages from the central Isqwa standards as part of the parking moratorium, work plan item. Staff worked with a consultant to look at both economic and functional issues around parking. There was a concern that structured parking is inherent to the vision of central Isqwa, and the council's decision was to put in place 50% requirements when you get past certain thresholds. So, in residential, there was no threshold, just one unit. In retail, it was 25,000 square feet, and in commercial office, it was 5,000 square feet. And so, by applying the central Isqwa standards to the urban villages, that, that's how that ends up as part of this package.
I'll, I'll go first. I'm, I'm less excited about structured parking.
Yeah, we need a second.
Huh?
We need a second, just, I guess.
We don't.
Okay.
Because if you're second, you're, you're saying you're probably gonna vote for it to vote.
So, you know, Chris, sometimes you might be uncertain in, in second, because you want to have the conversation. That wouldn't be unheard of.
Okay.
That's, that's normal.
So, up to now, let's make sure that, let's have a little moral ratification, that all of the motions so far have received a second.
Okay.
Be clear. I don't know if that works, but I did it anyway.
It's all good. I'm, I'm less excited about structured parking. I don't, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that I can even articulate why. I just feel that it is a bit of an artificial constraint, and that is, if the land, if you can, with the FARs that we have, it'll make economic sense to do structured parking or it won't. I don't know that we need to regulate structured parking. I think it may be burdensome to do that. So, this is one, I, I am very convincible, one way or the other. I don't, but I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's a necessary thing to do.
So, I heard a question in there about with the FARs, do it, do huge parking lot, surface parking lot?
Well, I suppose if you, this was a slide I've shown before, I, I don't know whether Councilmember Ray has seen it. It was kind of a quick and dirty analysis that we did for the February meeting, looking at non-residential or mixed-use projects that included structured parking, and then their different minimum non-residential densities. So, you can see that, you know, it's not unusual to have structured parking, it may not necessarily meet the threshold of 50%. And I lost track of the question.
So, so if I can jump in maybe to help. So, part of the conversation when we had this with, starting with PPC on Central, and then with the council, you know, if, if you're building Class A office space, you will have structured parking. It just, that, that's what Class A is, right? If you're building residential, which is not necessarily part of what's left over in the Highlands, but if you were building residential, what we found is that all the residential that was being built had at least 50%, actually had much more than that of structured parking.
Even in very not urban areas.
Right. And so, really, the, the push was on retail. And you guys set a limit at 25,000 square feet, which is basically a big box. So, if you're gonna build a big box, then structured parking would need to go with it. But anything smaller, small scale, could be surface parked. So, I think you guys found a space that you were comfortable with in terms of the land uses and requiring structured parking. You know, I think what we, it's hard to imagine that somebody would build a four-story building and then try and surface park it, because the number of parking spaces that you would have to provide would take up a lot of land. Now, you might do it as an interim solution, to come back and build a structure later. But it's most likely, if you were building a multi-story building, that it would have at least a deck of parking. That's what we've seen pretty much throughout the city.
So, I don't have as much heartburn. So, what we've heard is the Isqwa Highlands, the development agreement areas have informed central Isqwa plan, and central Isqwa plan has then, you know, helped inform what we might do for replacement regulations. We are trying very hard to move away from surface parking, and when we, Grand Ridge Plaza, there was a desire to have, you know, it was a real push to get the structured parking. I, I just think it's very, 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 very consistent with what we want. I know it's expensive, but I'm not having the, they're provisional, and I, I really doubt the community's gonna say we want lots of parking lots. I just have not, you know, maybe I'll change my mind by the time we get to full council, but I'm just not having the heartburn. This is what we've said, this is the direction we've been heading.
When we considered this question for the central area, the, I sat in this room on this committee and, and made my decision in real time to support the structured parking for the, for the retail. And that went, at that time, against the administration's recommendation and the recommendation of our consultant. I've since regretted that I supported that for retail. I don't think I should have done that. I, I think that was a mis, I think the advice that we were getting at that time from the consultant and from, was, was, we probably should have taken that. Because we, we, without, not based on any experience, not on any data point, not on any research, not on what's, what is, how it's working elsewhere, with no information, just kind of on a hope that, let's be aspirational, let's really ask for something, not really knowing if it's gonna work, and against, against the recommendation we were getting. You know, I wish I hadn't done that. I, I think from a, from a retail perspective, I don't think that was correct. And, and so, I, and, and so there's that. And then the second thing is the, during those conversations, it was a. And then the second thing is the, during those conversations, it was about the central area, only the central area. Lucy, you have a slide and the last bullet on there is a rhetorical kind of this, you know, why wouldn't we do this for the Highlands? And aren't those the same goals? And there you go. That, we had an analysis. We didn't follow the recommendation of that analysis and we only talked about it and that analysis was based upon, you know, the valley floor. And I think there's slightly different characteristics there. So I don't, certainly not against structured parking and if it works, you gave some reasons where there's going to be. There already is some, you know, around, in and around Iskona, in the Highlands, so I get that. But I think when it comes from an economic development angle, that that's a heck of a lot of regulation that we put in the central area with structured parking, especially for retail. So I'm not in favor of extending that to the Highlands.
Okay. All those in favor of the structured, recommending to the full council the structured parking regulations as proposed, say aye. Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The Rs?
So I try and squirrel away slides, so I apologize that I did not anticipate this better.
The one with the red map, yeah.
I know. So I'm actually, I'm going to kind of...
And I've asked to bring this, I was, on who's raised this. So currently, as you show on the bottom, what you're looking at, this, the entire, I guess, I'm going to assume that's the entire, just about the entire.
All of Issaquah Highlands.
Is a receiving site. So a landowner in, any of those, any of that land could go out onto this market known as the transfer of development rights and find somebody who owned some land that had development rights on it and buy that. You get all that, right? And...
Yeah, we understand.
And, and, okay, so that's, and that is both for dwelling units and for, what's the other unit?
So we call it equivalent residential units. So it's either square footage or a residential unit.
So residential unit and square footage is for non-residential.
Right.
Right. And so the proposal is, you know, a smaller area and for non-residential only. And, and, but, so I think that's a, I think, I think take, so the idea of, I'm not against kind of taking the rest of that area out as a rece, taking it away as a receiving site. What I'm mostly against, I'm, is that this calls that for if anybody wants to use the TDR, it will require council approval. And the concept behind the TDR program was to create kind of a market that would help preserve open space. And I don't know that, and it's not a real active market. You can, maybe the argument could be made that it's really effective. I mean, it has clearly helped us preserve, people have, we have preserved some open space. But, but I don't think markets work too well when one side of the transaction, you know, needs legislative approval. And that's what I think is a mistake, is the portion in here that would, because you basically, honestly, my sense is that that'll just, no one will buy them. There won't be, the intent of preserving open space will essentially be blocked. No one's going to say, well, I'm going to go, I'm going to go, I want to do this and I need to get, you know, legislative, I have to get council approval to use them. And I think it won't work. So that's the part that I would like to remove from this, is the part that requires council approval for the use of the square footage.
So I'm going to be, I'm going to be an unpopular person maybe, but I am also your economic development director. So I'm going to tell you the last TDR that was purchased in the city was actually purchased in Issaquah Highlands and it's for the space that's now Candy Machet. So that was not a retail space and the people that wanted to buy it wanted to make sure they had retail square footage, so they bought one TDR. And so up at the corner of 25th, 24th, 25th, and Park Drive is where one TDR got used last year.
And it's a super cool candy store.
So it's a, and it's a great local business that we got to help. So, so there's a, there's a TDR win, right? And so just to Paul's point, I think, so the TDR program is a great program. And, you know, we talked about reducing the receiving, turning part of Issaquah Highlands or reducing quite a bit of Issaquah Highlands from being a receiving site. We initially suggested, I think, removing single-family residential from the TDR piece, which wouldn't have included Star Point.
So we went through a process, just to do a brief, brief historical recap of this, you know, initially all receiving site, then in, the HOA said we do not want single-family sites to be receiving sites and I think everyone agreed with that. So then we did a map, which I probably can find if you want me to try and dig, that showed multifamily sites and either mixed-use or non-residential sites throughout Issaquah Highlands. And I think the reaction was there were too many of them scattered, say, you know, if you take this line, which is maybe the urban, somewhat urban divide, that there were too many sites out in this area that were multifamily and/or mixed-use and that adding additional density in those locations would not meet community expectations, that that would be a surprise. So then we came back and looked at the area that is sort of the more central area. There are certainly sites like Proliance, which is down here, Discovery Heights, which is here, that are non-residential, as well as all of shelters property that, you know, were in that area and that potentially could have, be receiving sites. And in looking at that, then we went back and looked at some of the criteria that the city uses as receiving sites elsewhere.
Can you explain why it was proposed that the council approve using a TDR in, in the receiving areas? Because I think that's what the concern is.
Okay. I think that was our staff's takeaway and the administration's takeaway from the TDR process that Westridge Polygon went through to you add 100 TDRs to their project, that council wanted that level of involvement in the use of TDRs.
So what, what could go wrong if we remove the council approval process?
Well, I think that you could have a surprise for the community, although the council could also set thresholds of, you know, how much increase would be allowed without council action, for instance.
So if there, theoretically, if somebody wanted to, if there was no council approval needed and somebody wanted to use 100 TDRs, could they, under our code, the proposed code, automatically then increase their proposal by 100, whatever unit, whatever they're going to do without council approval?
So we would have to put some kind of mechanism into the agreement because right now we can't change, or the replacement regulations, we can't change the map without council action. So specific, and this would be consistent with the development agreements, there are 5 and 10% density increases that are allowed as elective actions by the master developer.
So I think...
I think my question was, so if, so could somebody, you do 100 TDR increase in development?
So under the existing TDR code, there's not, there's not, if it's designated as a receiving site, you know, that basically the zoning would be the cap. So in other words, you know, if, you know, and so we've got an interesting situation here because you guys are setting the caps with the existing ownership. So let's assume Grand Ridge Plaza wanted to add 20,000 square feet of additional retail. It's going to have to come to council because it's an upzone. So, so it's really doesn't, there's no use of TDRs because they'll just ask for an upzone. Now, you guys could say, we're only going to upzone it if you use TDRs. That's, that's a choice. But you have to go to council because it's, it's an upzone. That's the way we've structured this, is basically now the provision could change that, the conversation about the provision could change that. But right now, we've set a zoning cap basically on every parcel and even in the TDRs, I assume you'd have to go to council because it's analogous to an upzone.
So you have to go to council anyway?
Yeah.
So it's...
Well, right. Unless, unless you put, unless you decide that the use of TDRs is...
Not analogous to an upzone and you could up to 10 or 20%. You could pick a...
Right. Because, because of the reasons that Councilmember Winterstein identified, that this furthers values and priorities of the city and therefore we're going to, and there is a cost to them. So it's not that you just decide I'm going to add TDRs willy-nilly. I mean, I...
Someone did and it turned out cool.
Well, it was, it was five digits, I think.
So, so, you know, I think, I think Paul, that's a great question. I would be concerned about surprise, although it sounds like it's got to come back to council for upzone anyway. It sounds like in more, most circumstances. But is that also not captured as part of the provisional, provisional was adopted? Look at that. Anyway.
Well, thank you for that explanation. The, I was under the, I was under the belief that it was a vote only, it would be a vote of the council, the decision of the council, only on yes, they can use them or not. And I wasn't considering that, that it would, but it would be an upzone. Now, you know, this conversation has led me to believe, boy, we've, this is a conversation we've missed and I think there's probably more to have. This is a very interesting topic. And, and what I didn't want, I think it's very, it would be a mistake for the city of Issaquah to be out there and said, if anybody wants to use TDRs, you have to go to the council. I think that's the wrong signal because we're, I understand that we want to control things to a certain extent, to the extent that we can. But there, but there are other objectives that we have as well. And it is about preserving open space and kind of, and understanding our role and what it takes, you know, to do that. And so I realize now, what I was actually arguing against is immaterial because the other parts of this is actually, is putting the limit already and that would be an upzone. So thank you for that conversation. I think making this part of the provisional conversation is really good because a community conversation about TDRs and what it's all about would be very valuable. I would really like to see that.
And because I'm old and I forget things quickly, I'm going to go ahead and just throw this out there. So what, the construct that I'd like to talk about when we get into that, if that's where this goes, would be maybe a double cap. So you'd have a cap and you'd have a TDR cap, right? And so then, then that would get you past that need to get council action.
And, and create more predictability for the community so that it doesn't seem entirely open-ended, right?
Great suggestion. So I was the one who wanted to talk about it and I'm ready, I'm, I can table it.
Okay.
With the provision that gets in the provision conversation.
And I'll forget to double cap by tomorrow.
And I wrote it down.
See that little red light, that red light's on?
That's why I said it.
So I don't have any issues left for the Issaquah Highlands DA agenda bill. Does anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Okay. I think we're done with that. So I want to, so I want to thank you two for all of the work that you put into this. It's been a lot of work and I know that you're really looking forward to the day that it's provisionally off your... We don't know what the council's going to do, but, and then to also Chris and Paul for all the great conversation. This isn't, this isn't, this isn't easy at all. This is complex and a lot of different interests, a lot of different directions and I, we all appreciate that. And for anybody watching, people who have contributed to the conversation, we really appreciate that. We've had some full rooms.
So what's the next step?
We're supposed to full council and then waiting for vesting questions to be answered?
I think there's the March 5th step, which would be the completing a conversation.
Doing a vesting.
Right. And then, but I won't join you for that. And so I will be working on the agenda bills for this to pull in the pieces that you have voted on and I will have, so you will see them shown legislatively then with a memo explaining what changes have been made so that you can see that language. There will be an ordinance, there will be a motion.
Two ordinances, right?
Yeah, thank you.
So these will come back to the full council as two ordinances, one for Talis, one for the Highlands. There's a lot of reasons why it makes sense to have it as two separate sections of city code because like, for example, provisional, once we go back and talk to the communities, one may change and one may not.
So we had originally, just to unpack that statement a little bit, we've been fighting pretty hard to have this reassembled when they got adopted and we aren't doing that anymore for, there's, there's many, the clerk's office is happy, they're going to completely renumber the document to set them up as completely independent units.
So are we bringing vesting back to the March 5th full council meeting in the executive session? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Excellent.
And we all seven of you can have your questions hopefully answered adequately.
Right. Yeah, we will discuss what we can, what the, what the parameters allow us to discuss in executive session. We're limited. Okay? All right.
Awesome.
I am.
Okay.
The rest of the meeting is so easy.
So the next item...
Very exciting, so you might want to stay.
Agenda Bill 7533, first major amendment to the Costco development agreement. So Keith, are you going to take it off?
I'm sorry, yes. So everybody, take a big breath. All right, so we're going to, we're going to change channels here and talk about the proposed first major amendment to Costco development agreement. So what, what are we talking about? So the administration, so this is coming from the city, the city actually. And so the administration is requesting a major amendment to the Costco development agreement to allow for the delay of transportation project number three, all right? And that's the 12th Avenue SR 900 intersection. We're asking for that because we entered into an agreement with state parks to talk about both working on a EIS together as well as a potential development agreement. And one of those components would be to look at potentially moving the entrance to the park to something that's closer to this particular intersection. Why are we here talking about this with you? Right now, the way we wrote the development agreement is it requires a major modification, which is council action, to delay any of the projects listed in the MTFA by more than a year. And so that's, that's why we're here. So policy questions and then we'll get into some of the details here in a second. So should the council allow the proposed project three delay? So that's a question that you guys get to deliberate on. Should Costco be allowed to veto any proposed changes to project three? I think that's a big part of this because they, you know, they've got a contract. They said, you know what, we're willing to work with you guys, but... We're willing to work with you guys, but we shouldn't get a worse outcome than what we had negotiated in the development agreement." So that's a conversation point. Three, should any increases in cost to Project Three be assessed to Costco? Although they're a very nice employer in our city, they're saying, you know, this is really between the city and State Parks. And if ultimately, Project Three turns into something more expensive coming out of this process, what Costco's asking for is, maybe they shouldn't pay for any of that increase in costs. So that's a conversation point. And then the last is, should the city absorb the increases in cost to modeling to satisfy Costco's concerns? So, those are the pieces that we'll talk about. There might be more, but I'm gonna start with that.
Can I go, can you go back one?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, sorry. Maybe I can't. Ah, sorry. Hit the wrong button. I was sitting too long. Yes.
Can I just tell, can I just say thank you for this slide? What, why, and the policy questions? Now, that seems like a very basic thank you, but this is what we have been missing for years. And I'm very serious about this. So I wanna thank you for putting this together without even examining whether you've got all the right words in the policy questions. Thank you.
Well, you're training me well. So, you know, part of this is helping you guys think through this. Don't get used to that. All right. So, here we are. So here's, basically, a slide on the left is Project Number One. That was improvements to East Lake Samamish Parkway. You can see what looks like new striping and new paving over here on the, I think that's the west side, and new landscaping. So that, that work has already been done. This right here, this is the new 62nd Street extension. This is Project Number Two. It is under construction, has been. For all of us who used to walk this trail from Pickering over to East Lake Samamish, we're looking forward to December when that will be back open again, hopefully. That is also, it's under contract, under construction. And so, Project Three, you know, here we are. This is the Holiday Inn. This is the IHOP and the ARCO, and the State Park is up here. And so it really was looking at redoing this intersection to add capacity, you know, primarily in an outbound PM direction. So helping the traffic leave the Pickering area in the PM peak. And as you can see up here, we estimated the cost at that about $3.1 million. Okay? This is, these are maps that were not in the attachment of the agenda bill. We just got these from Costco. So this is, there was a map that I showed you guys at full council that said Costco was concerned about level of service at other intersections. So, so the conversation that we had with Costco, and I'll let Rich and/or Patrick come up and provide any information they would like as part of this presentation. What they were concerned about is if we focus just on level of service at this intersection at 12th, it may very well push more traffic to some of these other intersections in the vicinity. And what their concern was, is that the city would be myopic and just focus on one intersection and say, "Look, level of service here is equal or better." And what their concern was, is maybe that might push a problem somewhere else. So they said, you know, "We want you guys to look at the flow of traffic in some of the other intersections around Pickering so that when we do understand the potential impact of moving the State Park entrance closer to 12th, we will also know if that has any unintended consequences to any of these other intersections." So that's, that's kind of my whole thing. I'll ask Rich or Patrick if they do wanna say something at this point, because we didn't rehearse. So, I don't know if you wanna come up, Rich, and address the committee?
And I think also, Keith, when Rich is done, you need to specifically, so there's, it's, so that, we need to talk about the specific proposed amendment.
Yes.
Okay.
I really just walked up here because Stacy also taught me the last time that I should be here. Councilman Ray, we haven't had the pleasure. Rich Olin from Costco, I've been working with the city for a long, long, long time. This is my swan song, end of April, I'm retiring from Costco. But it's been a pleasure. So I really don't have anything prepared to say. I can answer whatever questions come up as we, as we go. We are trying, as we always try, to be good corporate citizens. So the city wants more time to try to figure this out. We understand that the State Park is a jewel within the community and has the promise of being even more of a jewel. We don't wanna get in the way of that. At the same time, just as Keith said, we struck a deal. It was a package deal for three projects. We knew how much it was gonna cost. We knew what we were going to get. We thought that was a fair deal. We're prepared to give the city additional time to try to figure this out, but it's a giant unknown for us because unlike the development agreement where we have three specific projects, the city came to us and said, "These are the projects, and this is what it will cost." Now we have this unknown project and how it will affect us and what the cost will be, and all those things are all unknowns. So, we have tried and we've worked closely with the staff, and that's what you have in front of you is this draft amendment that we've collaborated with the staff on, to try to balance the various interests. And I think that's all I need to say for now, but I'm, I'm here for the duration so I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Keith, can you pop up your policy questions slide?
Yep, I sure will.
Do you have any idea what the new project would look like?
So, so part of, no. That was my easy answer.
That's good. That's good. Yeah.
So, so the way that, the way this is gonna work is, we're working with now Jacobs, it used to be CH Toom Hill, to basically stress test moving that entrance closer to that intersection. So we don't know if we can get it all the way to the intersection. We don't know if there's gonna be a certain offset that needs to happen. Right now, you also, what also is a variable is you've got that entrance to the gravel parking lot for the soccer fields, which is close enough to that interchange, intersection, which causes a backup problem on Saturday mornings during soccer season. And so, so all of that is gonna come in. So they're gonna model it and push it towards the intersection. It may make it all the way there. It could ultimately, I'm gonna go back to the aerial photograph, council member, because I think it's gonna be helpful. So it could very well be, right now, this building, which is where Tully's and the, some wireless carrier that I'm not gonna plug, is, is in that building. It could very well be that we need to take that out. And whether or not, you know, so, so what's gonna happen is you're going to, you're gonna understand what needs to happen to get the capacity that you need to potentially meet their expectations, meet State Park's expectations. It could be a giant roundabout. It could be, it could be, you know, straightening out this...
I think your answer was no, right? Do you know what it's gonna be?
So the answer's no. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables. Don't know what it looks like. The modeling is gonna help us get there. Thank you. When it gets late, I kinda ramble.
Yeah. I know you love to answer, so sometimes we have to say yes or no.
Yes.
And what, as currently envisioned, what would Project Three look like?
So, as currently envisioned, and it's actually described here, I don't know if you can actually read this, my apologies if you can't, says, "Construct a double left turn westbound to southbound SR 900 and bicycle lanes in both directions. Reconstruct a six-foot wide sidewalk on either side. No landscaping." That's the project is currently in the development agreement.
And is the thinking rationale for delaying the project in that the moving of the park entrance will have an impact on this intersection, and we don't want to have to tear it up twice?
Yes. I do know the answer to that one. Yes.
So I wrote, "Measure twice, cut once."
Tear it up twice.
Yeah.
Question. Is there any chance the park entrance would be even further east? Is that under contemplation at all?
So, right...
So in other words, maybe this project as envisioned could still go forward.
So there's definitely a possibility that Project Three could be the end outcome. State Parks, right now, is, is wanting to investigate moving it east. Is this east? Is east towards 12th?
East is to the right.
East is to the right. So yes, so it wants, so they want it further east. They want it closer to this intersection because they feel...
My question is, east of that intersection still?
Oh, over here?
East.
At least, young man.
So, you can say you don't know. I had thought I had heard that. I thought I had heard that from you, but if you're saying no, I was just really trying to gather whether or not maybe this could not be affected at all possibly.
I don't know that it could go east of this intersection.
I believe what Keith was saying and what we have heard from the city is they wanted to test moving it from its current location eastward to various places along the line, with the end of the line being this far, the farthest east point would be to this intersection.
Yeah, thank you. And I recalled, I thought I had heard also, that even further east along 56 was contemplated by the parks. But you're saying, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. So can you...
Go back to the policy.
Sure. You wanna go back to the policy?
Yeah. Dang it. Sorry.
You said you wanted to read your allegations.
So specifically, my understanding is that Costco would agree to amend the schedule for the traffic analysis and to entertain modifying the construction timing and design if they are presented with a revised project design that includes a written request, design plans, a construction schedule, and a relevant traffic analysis. And they also, the proposal is that project costs go over $2.5 million increase. The city bears the 100% cost. The second $2.5 million, Costco would pay for. Is that right? No?
So I'm gonna defer, so this is Sheldon's world. Sheldon's out of the country at the moment.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. I'm reading it wrong. I'm sorry. It's all city.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the first column. I apologize. Never mind.
Okay.
And this, this is, this is, those numbers are actually for the all-three projects. That's not just Project Three.
Right.
That, that, the first two columns are all-three projects. And so effectively, what this amendment would do would say...
So it would be wrapped in, I've said, so it would be, it's, the agreement that we have still is in place, and this project, whatever it ends up to be, as it feeds into a potential increase in the cost, the, no? A First Amendment, it's all city?
Yeah.
Okay. Never mind.
So, so let me, so let me, let me explain this as best as I understand it, and this is really Sheldon's world, so I'm gonna, I'd like to call a friend, but I can't, unless one of these two gentlemen wanna add. So, here's the deal. The way we structured the cost sharing of the MTFA was, we expected it to be this much. If it was within the first band past that, the city was gonna pick up the first band. If we hit the second band after that, Costco was gonna pay for the second band. And then any, if we hit the third band and the third band was infinite, the city would pick up everything in the third band. So what's being proposed here, and this was an ask from Costco, was since we now know what the cost of Project One and Two is, and Sheldon feels comfortable with the cost of Project Three, we're not gonna hit that first Costco band. That there's, there's, there's belief that we won't get there. So this is, so even though this looks like a give to Costco, it is not something we're gonna hit, and so, we were willing to agree to it, I think.
And so what, we heard at infrastructure, was that it's within budget right now?
Yes.
And that the, I asked if the parts of the construction that more likely could cause increases in construction, has that passed? And Sheldon said, "With the exception of one, all of those events have passed." And so that's why he's more certain that we're gonna stay within budget. And it's the replacement, the sewer line replacement? Yeah, that's the only one.
So, and to focus you guys on the language before that, that three, that three-column chart. So basically, this amendment, which has the city basically picking up Costco's band, is only if we change Project Three. So, so if we decide through this process that the Project Three, as it's described in the MTFA, is what we're gonna build, this allowance to alleviate Costco from paying an overage is still in the development agreement, the way it's written right now. Does that make sense?
It does. And the, and when I first saw it, I said, so, we're saying that any potential, if this causes a delay and a change, and a change to the intersection, as Project Three is currently envisioned, that that change is worth an extra $2.5 million to the city. That's what, that's what I saw, when I saw that. We're willing to say, you know what, we're, it's, it's gonna be so valuable to us, we'll assume that burden as, as, that's our, that's the, to make it palatable to Costco.
So let me, let me say it differently, because I think, what I would say is, so right now, Costco and the city have agreed generally on a 48-52% split of total costs, right? And so if you take that three-point, generally I'm gonna round, $3.1 million expected cost for Project Three, Costco's got a share of that, right? And so what this is saying is that Costco's share is not going up. So if we agree with State Parks to modify Project Three, and instead of a $3.1 million project, it's now a $5 million project, their percent, their total cost out of pocket doesn't change, right? What, who pays that extra increment? Whether that's the city or State Parks, that's a whole other discussion in a whole other room with different people. They just wanna make sure, one, they don't have any more cost associated with this, and two, they don't have a decreased, or they don't have an increased traffic impact.
Understood. I guess I'm, I'm a little bit skeptical on the certainty of both Project Two and Project Three. That's, that's...
Okay.
Just, just a conservative because things happen.
Yeah.
So the, as I, so as I read, and I understand that Costco wants certainty, there's also the possibility that this project could be, could benefit Costco, could be better for Costco.
Absolutely. And they, I think they, they see that too.
So, was there a discussion about in that event? And I, and I know Costco doesn't wanna pay anymore, and, and I think they're, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say for them. So, I was wondering what the, what the thought is about that. What if it ends up to be much better? And then it's sort of a windfall, so to speak.
So, I guess what I would say, and I'll definitely invite Rich up if you would like. I mean, I would, so right now, the development agreement amendment doesn't address that component. And, and, but what I would say is, let's assume that we can increase the level of service at that intersection with a completely different design from level of service D to level of service C, okay? And let's assume that there's a $5 million bump, okay? It may be that the city comes to Costco and says, "Hey, you guys, we can improve the way that you get in and out of this intersection dramatically, but it's, it's a big bump. Would you guys be willing to cost-share that?" They could say yes. They could say no. You know, it's their, you know, this doesn't obligate them to, but it also doesn't close that opportunity. Part of the value of a development agreement is we have a partnership that's gonna last for 30 years, and partners come and look for opportunities to, for win-wins, I think, along the way. So, I would say that exists. We could write it into the development agreement amendment if, if the committee thought that that was appropriate. I don't, so one piece too is... I don't, so one piece too is, we expected we'd be here for two sessions. So if you guys have some follow-ups that you want, Patrick, he's writing as we speak. You know, if you guys wanted to explore some things, we could go back and talk about that and, and come back to you guys.
Great. So that's great to know that you expect to be here two sessions. So I would want, I would want to know if there's a possibility that we could put something in the agreement that obligates Costco if we find there's a, if we want, if we want to do a revised project, and there is a benefit to Costco, that they, that they obligate, that they're obligated to at least consider that. And, and maybe we should be stronger than that, but I'm, it's hard to figure out what that might look like. But, but I think, you know, I think we should be looking at all of the possibilities. And I, you know, and I, and I understand, you know, there, you know, it is what it is, and we don't have to even consider this amendment. And so I appreciate that Costco's amending it. But I guess part of my job is to make sure that I'm doing what I can to, you know, help the city. And so one of those would be, well, maybe Costco should share if something is, if the new project is shown, if a project is shown to be an increased benefit. I, I don't, and I don't know that we need to discuss that tonight if you're going to come back, but it's just a question that I have.
Sure. And I think, you know, we could talk about that and see what kind of legs that has, if any. No promises, but-
Yeah, plus one.
Okay.
I think it's dangerous to type, to talk about hypotheticals in a contract. And so I get, I get where you're going. I just think it's dangerous. I mean, would've, could've, should'ves, might'ves. It's, it's really hard to nail that down. But I have another question. I want to kind of rewind a little bit. What's the timeline on amendment, or Project Three right now?
So Project Three right now should be in design.
And would go online?
By nine, is it 19 or 20? 20.
How long are we looking to delay it?
So the way that the draft amendment is written is they're giving us like 10 months to figure it out. So we've got-
It's a reasonably short delay in this whole grand scheme of things.
It is, but to their, I mean, I think to their concern is they've got a very large new office building in for permit right now. So too much of a delay puts an awful lot of additional employees in an area that is going to have some traffic concerns. So.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Just to clarify one thing, it's actually a year because, we told the city to get started on this because we were going to agree to something. So that we've added, we've added a year. But what I wanted to clarify more importantly is, it's a year to study it. But if it turns out that the project goes forward in a different fashion than what was designed, it will be two, three, four years. Because 2020 is not going to happen. Nothing close to that will happen under Sheldon's timeline if they go forward with a new project and such. So, so that, I'm not sure which way your question was. Year delay for sure, under the amendment, several years delay in terms of completion.
Yep, and I think that was the, the, my line of questioning really was, how long are we really going to delay making a change to this intersection, which is not the swiftest intersection in town? And, and to Keith's point, you're bringing more people into this area with the new space, and so it's going to become a greater and greater impact on everybody.
I'm going to learn from earlier and say I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, so you're coming back next month?
We will come back next month. We will explore. Is there, so I wrote down, I wrote down one thing that the two of you would like for us to explore. I also heard a concern over hypothet, I wrote "dangerous" down. And, and so we'll, we'll come back next month. If there's anything else that you want us to look at or talk over?
Quickly, hopefully that's not a hypothetical because you can measure level of service. It's empirical data. So, so that is, let's pursue that. And when you said level of service, we're talking about wait times at intersection, so.
Absolutely. And we'll need to talk to their traffic engineer about how much of an increment is actually a perceived benefit, right? Yeah.
Good conversation to have. You had other policy questions. Did you want to, did you want to review them?
So, so right now, the, the way that these have been, so, okay, so should, should the council allow for proposed delay of three? So you, you know, right now, because of the agreement we've done with State Parks, it seems like, I don't know why you would not do that. It seems conflicting. Should Costco-
I think it was because of the questions that have been raised about delaying finishing the suite of projects when, you know, traffic's worsening and Costco's going to build something more. And so it's really sort of a practical question about whether it should be done. The one that we haven't talked about is should Costco be allowed to veto any proposed changes to, because the, to Project Three? Because the First Amendment would obligate Costco to consider the revised project.
Right. So that's, that's new. You know, the, the biggest thing that I think you guys might want to talk about is the fourth bullet. So that map that probably only Patrick might be able to describe.
That one.
This one?
I was going to ask you about that.
So obviously, this is more work, right, than what we initially scoped out with CH2M Hill, now Jacobs. Sorry, they're Jacobs, but, and so there's, there's a cost to model all these intersections.
What is it?
Right now, it's somewhere between $60,000 to $80,000 is the estimate we got from Torsten. So that's, that's not, that's not negligible amount of money.
Add in the agenda bill?
That is new information that we just got.
So that's, the answer's no.
I don't do well with that. The answer is, the answer is no.
It's the beginning of the year.
I know. So, so that's, so, but that's why that question was posed to you guys is, is, you know, if you want us, so we haven't even had that conversation with Costco yet.
So I was going to suggest that that's, so rather than us deliberate that, it's another one of your list of questions that you can go back and talk about. And-
Right. So, yeah, so we will do that. But that's so, the pain is so fresh on that number that Sheldon was going back to Torsten to better understand how that number got as big as it did.
Those are two different maps, and one of them has an overcrossing. So is, so I would imagine the scope of the study would change. I think that, I'm reading that if there's a proposal, do you want us to assume an overcrossing? And if yes, we do one thing. If no, we do something else.
So the way I understand these is, so Costco's worried about, so there's a long-term outcome for traffic, but there's a short-term one. So they're going to, in a near future, be occupying a brand-new building. And our model has the 12th Avenue crossing, or the Maple Crossing, whatever you want to call it, in the model. Their concern is what happens in the short term without the 12th Avenue improvements? Because that crossing will not be there in the next three years. And so they want to know kind of the Armageddon scenario. What, what's that look like? When, when basically you're deferring one improvement and other stuff that's, that's modeled to be there isn't there either. So they just want to understand that. So, so these are their asks. These don't reflect, that doesn't reflect what the city's model actually says. So they want, so we're calling it the Costco model run.
Okay.
Did you want to?
As soon as we don't have any more comments, I'm going to call, or questions, I'm going to call for public comment. Rich?
Just to add a couple of things. Under the terms of the agreement as it's currently drafted, it's not that Costco, I know Keith had the policy questions, but to make it clear, the city made, the staff made it clear that the answer to that policy question about should Costco be allowed to veto, the answer was no. So it's not in, that is not in the amendment. What the amendment provides, what we have negotiated, is related to these traffic studies that will be done, which is that there are benchmarks in the amendment that provide that if all of these things occur, Costco cannot say no. Costco does not have veto power. What it's saying, what we're saying is, we have established benchmarks, and if they are achieved, then a Costco has to say yes. So that, so Keith's point was, that was a policy question, but he already made it clear, we're not agreeing to that. So I just wanted, just wanted to make, to make that, to make that clear, that that, that that's- So that's-
Your policy questions need work. Just, are there any other questions? Yeah. Okay, I hear, see no more questions. So do we have anybody from the public that wants to, that have input?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, and we'll see you one more time before you retire. Okay, next?
Next is-
Agenda Bill 7326, Old Town SubArea Plan?
Yes. So the, the Old Town Plan Update. So I'm just going to quickly, I've got, oh, I've got three slides. Let me actually turn the slideshow on. Sorry. I'm clearly have been in this room too much. Okay, so this is just a, this is just a recap of the process that we've gone through so far. So there was a task force, an ad hoc task force that was put together to talk about Old Town, and there was a bunch of recommendations came out of that. One was to do a streetscape plan. That was done in 2016. As part of the plan update, there's been a number of community meetings that have occurred. There was an online survey that happened from March to April of 2017. And then this went through PPC, Planning Policy Commission, in April of 2017. So what I'd like this committee to do is I want you to remand this plan back to the Planning Policy Commission, and here's why.
We have the authority to remand, or are you just bringing, I don't think we do.
So it has to probably go back to full council to remand it back to PPC.
We'd recommend-
Oh, you want us to recommend it? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and here's why. So the, the, the plan that went through PPC already, there's, there's a lot of things that have changed. The first thing is, as part of-
So I think that's good enough. I don't think we need to know all the things that have changed. Isn't that your reason? That so many things have changed that it needs to go back, okay, move on.
Okay.
Sorry, it's five, it's five to 10.
Good. All right. So last, last agenda item this evening?
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry. Public comment. My, my bad.
No, I was confused. So you wanted us to remand?
I want you to, I want to recommend to the full council to remand the draft plan update back to PPC for additional review and a new recommendation.
Did you want us to do anything with this? I thought you wanted us to look at it. No?
No. I just want, I'm, so, so if, if, this one's killing me, this one's killing all of us.
Why did I have to read it?
So if, if, if the committee is comfortable just remanding it or making a recommendation to remand it back to PPC because there's been all these changes, and I can go through those if you want to hear them.
No, but I, so I would make a motion that we do that and that it goes on consent.
Second.
All right.
Do you, do we want to do public comment first?
I, no.
Is that, I, last month, and I, we, we can't, we terminated the meeting early because, for good reason. I was so ready last month to do this, and I reviewed everything. I'm ready to do it again, so, oh, okay.
Yeah, agreed.
I know. I think so.
All right, so we're done with that.
Okay.
We don't need any comment on something that's going to have more-
It's, it's coming back. It's going to get better.
Okay, the last item is the Central Issaquah District Visions.
So all, and all I'm doing tonight is really introducing this. I've, I've expected we'd be back to land and shore at least in April and in May for Central Issaquah Plan Visions. And so what I wanted to do is take you through a very high-level conversation about where this, what has happened since you guys remanded this back to PPC. We've spent, we've spent six, six meetings so far. There's going to be one more meeting on the Green Necklace that's a joint meeting with the Park Board. But basically, where, where we, what we've done is, there, there used to be 10 districts in Central. And right now, we're down to five neighborhoods. We took out most of the service neighborhood, which is kind of back where the shop and the RV park is. And we took out Old Route 10, which is where Bohm's and The Grange are. We also, as of last night, we spent 6:30 till 11 o'clock last night going through this. We, there's a little bit of a modification on the Gilman Neighborhood to include kind of this area on the south side of 90 as opposed to making it part of Eastlake. So, so there are few map changes coming your way. And so basically, this is really all I want to talk about tonight, is there's a, there's a vision for the subarea. And we started talking about that in December, and it's gone back through Planning Policy Commission, and it's been tweaked. And then there's objectives, and we had, we kind of evolved those since the version you guys saw. So the next time you see this, I think my hope is that you like where it went. It's, there's been a lot of conversation publicly with PPC and the task force, and also just interested members of the public. And then neighborhood visions, where we've really kind of divided each neighborhood into a section of developer obligations, a section of city actions, and then measures of success. And so that's been worked all the way through, that we finished up last night. So you guys, as part of the packet for April, you will get an updated and, and final version coming out of PPC, including hopefully the, the finish of the Green Necklace. So that's, that's all I wanted to do tonight, was to get you guys to start thinking about this.
You didn't want us to provide any feedback?
If you have feedback, I would love feedback. I just didn't want to get into, I want to take you guys any farther. I didn't. First off, I didn't know how late it'd be. And just second, you know, it's, it's up to you guys. If you guys want to give any feedback, if you have some thoughts early on, I'd love to have them.
Because you asked us to read.
I, I know. But I don't, I'm-
So I'm going to give, it's kind of high-level feedback, and then I'm going to, I can run through mine really quickly.
Okay.
Just so it's kind of on the record, I guess. And then I will give you my copy so that you can have it.
That'd be great.
So the first, so this is a subarea plan?
Yes.
And the one that we just put down, that we just raced through is a subarea plan?
Yes.
They are not at all similar in format?
Nope.
So I guess the question I have is, it's kind of seems like we should have similar formats for our subarea plans.
So, so that was a, that was, I've heard that comment from elsewhere. I think that where we are right now is PPC's taken a ton, so they, they ran Old Town through in one meeting.
So I'm just going to give you my feedback, and I don't need, I don't want to be here for another hour. So you, you can take my feedback?
I will.
So I still think there's too mu, too many words. And I'm concerned that the developer obligations piece is super, super wonky. That's not an official word, but I wanted, I want to know how this is going to work. And I would love to have somebody spend some time doing a test, mini-test, to see how that's going to work. The, I don't understand the long, how the plan works section, section. It's a page, almost a page long, and it just tells me about each chapter.
Right.
I don't think that is useful at all because nobody's going to read it. The, the, when you start on the Central Issaquah Vision Neighborhood Visions and Plan Objectives, I think the whole updated visions information can be put in a footnote, footnoted- I think the whole updated visions information can be put in a footnote, footnoted to an appendix. Again, just for some history, we don't need that in there. The introduction can be shortened up to one sentence, and I will give that sentence to you. When you get over to page four, Central Isaguac Vision, again, one sentence, and I think the second paragraph, when it talks about the thriving businesses and distinctive neighborhoods, I think that can be re, that can be over underneath the vision statement. See, you know, I'm not gonna write all these down, but I just want to kind of, say them anyway. The Neighborhood Visions section, some of that can be moved and stricken. There's just too much going on. And I didn't really read too carefully the different elements, the livable, distinctive, and all that. I just, mostly, I was concerned that there's just so, still so much were in words. That's it. Short.
Okay. Anybody else?
It, it did say in the packet that we were, we were, you know, look at first nine pages or something like that, but I've watched most of the PPC, including I was watching last night. Ask, ask Mel. And, and I'm, it was, there's, there's a lot of, you made changes. I mean, I real, we had something in the packet.
Yeah.
I know that there was, what was in the PPC packet was different. Then you had a different version last night, and you changed it even further.
Yep.
So I didn't, so I didn't spend time on this one, because I knew what we had was even there. But I have taken some time to look at some other examples, and I'm sensitive to the wringer that you are going through on this. And I, I, I won't go as far as Stacy in saying it's too many words, or all of that in the structure, but, you know, I just, I went to MSRC and started reading about vision statements for cities and sub-areas, and looking at examples. And I'm, I'm sorry, I just couldn't, there was, some of the good examples out there are just look and feel a lot different than what we're, than what we're coming up with. And I know it's been through the wringer many, many times. And I, there's some pretty good examples out there that are, that get the job done pretty succinctly. Okay, I wanted to say that. I, I'm looking forward to what you're gonna do. I do want to make a comment about the developer obligations. It was in December at this meeting, this committee meeting, where you dropped the language, the proposed IMC code on this. I am not in favor of that at all. The IMC, with the shall, do developer obligations. I'm starting to learn a little bit about the way the, kind of the, the, the permit process works. I know that there's administrative level, it might be bumped up to, to Development Commission. And I know already that, that there are, there is, sometimes there's a negotiation about, we really think you should do this, and, and there can be back and, back and forth. And, and, and if, 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 if you're gonna put a condition on a permit in order to get approved that, that somebody doesn't like, they're likely to walk away. And I, I think this developer obligations, you know, if instead, and I think, I am concerned about the, how ambiguous they can be, and pretty gray. That's, I think the, I don't know if the walkthrough is the right idea, but I am concerned about that. But I don't think we need code that says shall. I, I think the process that you use right now, and if we want to put something on a permit that says, you know, this is what we're trying to do, and, you know, let's look at what the council, the council has adopted, and this is what we, we really want developers to do in this area. And, and you can make it part of a permit, and if they don't like it, they can walk away. But this idea of it being, you know, something that is, that we have to, we have language in IMC that says, you know, you shall do these things, I, I think that's a bridge too far. That's my opinion at this stage of the game.
Sure. So just a couple of quick thoughts about that, just so that you guys can think about it before next time, because they're pretty fundamental to the way this works, right? So if, if you say should, you're allowing an applicant to, in the way you described it, walk, if they don't like it. They actually say, they get their lawyer, there were many in the room today, to basically say, you can't make me, and if you do, I'll sue you. So it's not walking. They're actually insisting that that's not gonna happen. So what this does, and the way, so those developer obligations, and I've used these words sparingly, because I don't want to freak anybody out. The way they work, in my mind, is their design guidelines. So they're not, they're not prescriptive, they're performance. So they say, this is what we want to achieve. It doesn't say how, right? So a zoning code would be, you know, you can build 54 feet, and you have to go 20 feet back from the property line. There, it's very explicit about what you can do, or what you have to do. You know, a design guideline is much more of a, we want you to do this, but there might be 20 different ways that you can do that. But you have to do it. You can't say, no, I'm not gonna do it. Sorry. So I'm just throwing that out there. And part of the reason why we're doing this in the first place is the visions were identified as being too loose. We didn't know what we were gonna get. These are definitely very clear.
The, so I have a little bit different take on it than Paul's. Maybe it's even completely, not even different take, maybe just completely different thought, Paul. So I think that if, so when I say wonky, I mean, I, it's, it's gonna be cumbersome, my, and I think, and then I also have the concern, if it's a developer obligation, then it's a, then it should be a shall. But I'm concerned about how it works. I'm concerned about how developers, people with applications even find what the obligations are. What I think it is, is a shortcut to get the visions adopted, so that we can lift the moratorium as soon as we can. And I don't, and I, I agree that we want to get it lifted as soon as we can. That so said, I don't like the shortcut. So I don't know what to do about it at this stage, but we also haven't heard anything from our city attorney about how this might work or not. But if it's an obligation, then it needs to be in code somehow. And if this, and if this works, then I want to hear it, that it works, from our city attorney, that they are obligations that can, that we can enforce. And I also want somebody to go work through it, because I, they're, those are separate issues. I had another thought. Oh, I think, or my, I have right now.
So, and just, so, because it might have been too subtle in all the words. Page 488 of the packet, if you can see, there's three notes at the top, and then that third note is actually a code amendment. So that's the mechanics. So it's 1819A11C, and the underlined is the mechanism for how you can require it. So it basically takes the visions and turns them into code. So, and that came from Jim. But if, if you want more than that, I can get him to write a memo.
Yeah, I still, yeah, it's just, it's very weird.
Okay. So I heard all that. We'll have some more conversation. I know there were a lot of people that worked on this, and I think have a comfort level with it. So, you know, maybe there'll be some public comment next time or something.
Chris?
Yeah.
I don't have anything on this one.
Yeah, the, I'm gonna go back to the original, when we identified in the ordinance that established the moratorium, and what I thought I was agreeing to at that time, and what was presented to us really for the first almost nine months of the moratorium, and what this was gonna be. This has gone, this is not what I thought I was agreeing to. This is, is gone beyond, when you, this is prescriptive. You say it's performance-based, but when you get IMC code that says shall, and there's a list of things that, that developers have to do. I, I never, never dreamed that we were going there. That's not what I, that's not my understanding of, of kind of a vision, that level. I understand having a vision, some type of strategic framework on how to achieve that, but it's another body of work altogether than to take it to this level that we are. So I, I've said it once before. I think with this exercise, we're going beyond the scope of what was the intent. That was certainly my intent. And we didn't define it any further than that when we started the moratorium. And I think that by your staff's own performance, what you did when your first runs at that, you went to a certain level. And then, and now, for whatever reason, we've got, we've, we've gone this additional. So I, I just wanted to put that out there. When it comes to what I thought we were gonna do, we were gonna revisit the visions. And oh, by the way, I've heard a lot of comments in some of the PPC meetings that, that concern me, that there's some assumptions that are being made, and they're not, and that are just, are being stated, and, and they're just wrong, and that's kind of added to this concern. We've gone this full direction. I heard comments like, you know, we don't want any residential-only projects in this, in the, in these neighborhoods. Whoa, that's not captured anywhere. That's, that's not our intent. That was never said. But that's then the kind of stuff that's shaping some of the work that they do. So this is, this has gotten to this point where we're, where there's, there's, there is some of the assumptions that are driving some of the work, I think are invalid. And at the, but, but even with that said, we've gone with the scope of this way beyond what I intended when I agreed to this on the, on the moratorium. So I do have an issue with that, and I, I think we should be talking about something that goes more, which is more vision-oriented. It might stop in the middle there. Actual structure, you can set up a framework, but then, you know, I think it's a whole nother body of work, which is outside the scope of the moratorium work item, to go as far as we are.
The other.
So, so, you know, if, if we're gonna have a problem with construct, we need to have that conversation. You know, topically, if you have an issue with the, you know, the premise that we're not gonna lose any jobs or retail, or non-residential score footage, that's fine. We can have, that's what I assume the conversation we would have, right? But if we're having conversation about construct, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, I've got tens of hours, I mean, I don't even know, I'm probably close to 100 hours into this document, and, and working with the public to get us here. And if this is not what the council wants, you know, let me know sooner than later. Because going, starting from square one, if we're going back to scratch, this is a problem. This is just a significant problem. So we need to think about both structure and about, content's fine. I expected we'd go through the content. But if we're gonna go back and say, we don't want this structure, I don't know what to do with that, just to be frank.
Yeah, well, and, understood. And it's, and I voiced that concern before. And I'm saying, and upon, and I spent a lot of, and I know you've put a lot of time and energy, and I, I see what you're going through for this, but I, when I, when I, when I see also what's happening at those meetings, and some of the assumptions that they're working under, go, wow, this has really gone beyond what I thought we were gonna do. And, and assumptions about policy positions that we've not made. And that has to, we have to get on that. We can't let that process continue when maybe some of the material that's coming out is based upon bad assumptions, and policy that doesn't exist. And, and, and we have established policy, and with justification and reasoning behind it for a vertical mixed-use, for example. And then part of that was the acknowledgement that we're not gonna get it everywhere. And so, and so it just, that, but that seems to be coming back. And so, yeah, we'll have, maybe we'll have a conversation about that. But when I, again, when I say, when I think about, you know, when I look at the original visions, and the, the idea of just the concept of a vision, and what you're trying to achieve with that, the, the prescriptive nature of specific obligations and code to implement that is far beyond the scope. I'm repeating myself. And I don't know that anybody else agrees with me, but I feel strongly about that.
You have any other comments?
No.
Public comment?
I have one, I said, just, if you'd like.
Yeah?
It was late.
That's fine, no, we, called for public comment. Hi, Mel.
For the record, Mel Morgan, Feldman Commission, and the task force. The, so in my mind, there's sort of, there's hard regulations, soft regulations. And we started out the central area plan, and we really worked on, on standards, height, what the boxes you could build in, parking, those kind of things. And then when we came back after the moratorium, we added in design guidelines to say, okay, some people didn't like what was built, so let's change the design guidelines so the appearance is different than what we have. And then I think this, this third part is the softer, the softer-hard restriction. So the developer obligation is that softer, we want this to be a connected site to other sites. Well, as Keith said, that's not a numbers game. That's sort of a feely thing, how does that really work? So I think the, in terms of having developer obligations, I think it would be very helpful to look through those obligations and decide if there are any of those that you do want to have as a requirement, given that it's a soft requirement. If there are obligations that you think should just be in a vision and not required, don't have them as developer obligations. But if there are some things you think from a softer, a softer guideline that you do think should be in there, put it in developer obligations, because otherwise it doesn't really do anything. And maybe we don't want to have that as a requirement for anything, but I would look at those obligations individually before I would decide either way. So, it's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Hi, Steve Perro, Old Town, about 10 years. So I missed the last meeting. I didn't attend, I've attended previous ones. And at least as a member of the public, my sense is very much that we were having to talk about things we want, because we haven't been seeing those things we want happen. So we've had to be more, talk about prescriptive language, maybe not as prescriptive, but how do we get those things we want, because we're not getting them. I know when I sat on the library board, one of the things I had the opportunity to do was kind of learn some of the demographics, demographics of Isaguac, you know, the, you know, six-figure incomes and things we want, get people things we want. We're not getting, those are the things that affect the quality of life that we want, and we expect, and we're not getting. I know another feature is, we're 11 and a half miles from downtown Bellevue, 16.9 miles from downtown Seattle. Those are quality features that we want to attract developers, to give us the things we want. We're not getting those. We're trying to make them happen. This is, I think, a sense of public input that we want to have, to say that we don't want to give the public that opportunity to put those things into the document, is shortchanging what the public wants, and is a feeling, and I think I'm part of those who want to limit that opportunity and say that's not what the scope of this meeting is, or the intent of the meeting is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Connie?
So I remember the attorney saying that the scope of the visioning exercise, when this was brought to you all before, could include something of this nature, which, because the concept is, the community isn't getting what is expected. We are not getting the vision. And so in order to get the vision, you may have to change your structure in order to get what you want. Now, what you want is a little bit different than the structure. To me, the structure that was created flows so differently than the original visions. Nobody ever even saw the original visions. The developer did not. To me, these come off as almost single sheets that staff would sit down with the developer and say, this is the neighborhood you're, you're gonna be going into. And so this is our intent and our feel for this neighborhood. And so we want you to know right off that this is what we're aiming for. And so these are the things that you're gonna be expected to do. We aren't gonna tell you exactly how. We're just gonna say, these are the things that we want, and you can tell us how you're going to achieve them. And at the same time, the city is gonna have to do some work in order the same time, the city is going to have to do some work in order to get those visions to actually happen. And finally, in having this upfront conversation with the developer so that they know the expectations, I think we're going to start off on the right foot to get more of what we want without having to go to the incredible length and energy of creating code to get it done. Because I don't know that you could make code to implement a vision like that. And then you could take that same construct to Development Commission and say, this is what we've told the developer that they need to create. Do you feel that they have created that in what we are presenting to you for approval? And that gives them a tool to go through the community voice and say, yes, staff, developer, you hit it right on. No, you didn't. And, and we simply have not had that for the Central Issaquah Plan up to this point in time. So as crazy as the PPC conversations make me, because it feels like they're recycling the information over and over, trying to figure out how it works, I think this structure has a chance of finally connecting that information. And so while you might not support all of the content in it, I think that this concept is a decent concept, right? So I would like you to be open-minded and not just say it's gone too far. Because simply changing the vision language was not going to get anything to change, because it was missing the connection between the developer and the language. Who is going to talk to them about it and get it done? And so I think you needed a mechanism to do that. And this is the mechanism that they came up with. Imperfect? I don't know. A heck of a lot better than before? I say yes.
Thanks, Connie. So, anything else? I guess the only, the good of the order we have is the, we have a date on the, in April, that we're, a preliminary date for the Land and Shore meeting, April 19th, not the first Thursday. And we are waiting to hear back from Tola. So if we, this is mostly for Paul and Keith. I'm going to give Tola a deadline. And if I don't hear back, and he's out of town. I shouldn't say that on camera, like, he's not responding. He's out of town. He's at a, he's at a family funeral. So, but we have to make a decision. So, but I, but I don't want to make it without his input if, unless I absolutely have to. Yeah, I saw that. Okay? All right, we are adjourned.